literacy trainer here at Bank of Uganda. It's really good to see you here.
It's a pleasure featuring in this very important episode.
Yeah, you look lovely in red bow tie. You've matched the energy.
It's the season, Valentine's season.
Yeah, it's a Valentine's season.
Yes, sure.
So can we dive into, are you ready to talk love and money?
Oh yeah, sure, because that is part of life. And I'm more than ready to talk about it.
Okay, so let's just start with an easy one. In your opinion or experience, is it easier to manage a household budget? Or getting your wife or spouse or partner to follow it?
Yeah, thank you, Pumala. Now, having a budget is one thing. But getting your spouse to actually follow that budget is another. It is certainly not an easy one. But it takes the two parties involved, that is the couple, to actually sit together and have that conversation regarding the budget with the view of convincing the other party to actually follow that budget. And where necessary, there could be a bit of compromise, just to make sure that the budget is followed.
Yeah, that word compromise. I find that it managed to seep through every part of conversations regarding relationships.
Yes, it does, because just imagine, Pumala, having two adults together and you're discussing budgets and some people are not so much well versed with the budget, others, their budget personality is something that needs to be worked on. So they too have to find a way of compromising so that ultimately they can have a good relationship based on very strong money foundations.
Okay, another word I hear a lot that's used in relationships is communication.
Yes, communication.
Yes, communication.
Very important, because if you've had in relationships, someone says, no, he doesn't call me, so I also gave up. So the relationship just dies like that. And before you know it, or is your spouse, we separated. Why? Communication. It is even worse when it comes to money and there is no communication. So I suspect he gets a lot of money, but I don't get to know what it does, you know? So that could easily ruin the relationship.
It's good you've brought in money, because why would you say that money or financial communication is very important in relationships? And maybe if you can share with us a few tips, or how would you advise couples to start and continue engaging in such conversations?
Thank you. You see, two people cannot move together unless they have agreed. And that is well captured in the Bible, number three. So therefore, it means that for anything to happen, for decisions, financial decisions to be made, it's extremely important for the couple to sit together and have an honest conversation concerning this money. Because ranging from the amount of money the couple earns, you'd realize that the spouse earns a different amount of money, the husband earns a different one, and there are different expenses that have to be offset within the family. So without that conversation, it would be very, very hard to actually have that family or couple move together. Instead, there could be suspicion. You know, he gets money and takes it to other wives or women. Or she gets money and uses it to support the family back home. So before you know it, again, the family, the couple starts struggling in the relationship simply because there is no that conversation. So it's very important to have that communication on financial matters as a couple, to identify the kind of different sources of income, to harmonize on issues of savings, issues of, you know, borrowing or debt where necessary, because the money we earn may not be enough, may need to top up. But how much do we borrow? What do we put as security or collateral? Is it our very own house? So we find another collateral. The purpose to sit on the round table, have that honest conversation, communication as a couple, because they know themselves best. They know their strengths, financial strength, they also know their weaknesses. So that way, they will be able to harmonize and be able to move together as a couple and minimize any possible stress that comes with, without working together as a couple or having that conversation.
Yeah, it's interesting that you brought up the part of collateral.
Yeah, sure.
I actually know of a family
Yes.
where the woman was, the lady in the house, the wife was go home one time and found these bailiffs at home. And she had no idea
Yes.
that her husband had put their house up for collateral.
Yes.
This lady went on as far as to even say that she didn't even know that her husband had accumulated so much debt.
Yes.
And I used to think, maybe it's something that we need to dig into. You know how, like, for example, at Bank of Uganda, we, and many financial institutions,
Yes.
where offered facilities where we can borrow money at certain rates, at stuff rates. But you're not allowed to borrow that money unless you have a signature
Yes.
of your spouse. You have to have your spouse's consent.
Absolutely.
So she, this lady was so confused about how her partner or her husband had accumulated so much debt. And I found it strange as well, because I understand the principle of having, because by the time a measure exists to ensure that we are signing spouse or consent, it means that there is a vice. There is a vice that exists within our fabric
Yes.
of households.
Yeah.
Where people just go and borrow money and forget that when you come together as a union, now your finances, it's for both of us. So whatever debt you take, whatever assets, whatever liabilities, I am also part and parcel of it. Yeah, so, but how would you advise couples to start these conversations? Or maintain them? Because remember what you said in the beginning, you mentioned, ah, me, he stopped calling me, so even me, I gave up. That's the attitude of most people.
True.
They can say, ah, Mia, I tried to talk, ah, they gave up, or they did not. So how, is there any way you can share that? Maybe people can do more of this?
Yes, there are different ways through which couples can actually have conversation or communication regarding money and including a very important decisions to do with borrowing. First of all, it's very important for the two people involved in the relationship to actually know each other's strengths and weaknesses. You realize that a husband marries a spouse, but then their money personalities are completely different. In fact, to some extent, a bit incompatible.
Usually.
Usually.
Usually, you marry, you're opposite.
Yes, and that breeds a lot of suspicion just because of money. So what would be important in this particular case is for the two people involved in that relationship to actually sit. Because this is a reality, at the end of the day, it's going to catch up with us. If you're a man and you're forging your wife's signature and getting debt money alone, and then ultimately, you find that the home is written on bank property, not for sale, that is going to affect the children, it's going to affect the entire family, your image as a household is going to go down. So it's very important, as much as possible, for the couple, sit, discuss, identify your priorities. Is your priority borrowing or maybe reducing on the expenses? These are some of the hard decisions we have to reflect on. So it could be better for you to reduce, cut back on the expenses as opposed to borrowing. Because even if you borrow more money, if you don't have the financial discipline of using the little that you have very well, then you go back to the same point and before you know it, you'll be borrowing, borrowing, borrowing. You're putting your family at stake, you're putting your house at stake because you put it as collateral, and nothing is improving. And husbands out there, learn to involve your spouses as much as possible. Because whatever affects one of you, ultimately affects both of you. So try as much as possible to involve your spouses in decision making, especially financial decision making. That way, you'll be able to make informed financial decisions as a couple. And you'll have reduced stress, you'll have prosperity and happiness and become even richer as a couple.
Actually, it's good that I have a man here today. When women talk, they say, we are talk talking.
Yes.
But when men advise fellow men, at least something goes through. One of the things that I have found that works is the same way you set a day for, like, say, Valentine's season, that's fourteen.
You are very welcome once again. We are happy to have you. Thank you for coming as early as this. We are just about to start. Once our principals are here, LC five, then we shall start off together with the deputy governor. For now, we have an announcement, a key announcement to all of us, the stakeholders. It is coming in from the Cow's office. And I would want to invite the official to come and give us this announcement. Please listen to him, because it's quite important.
Thank you, sir. Organizers, our stakeholders, everyone around. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Brian Sherria, and I happen to be the district registration officer heading Nira in Usheni District. And I'm really happy and honored being before you, being invited by the Cow, by the Office of the Cow, to relay a brief communication, which is likely to take like two minutes. If you're to realize, you'll see that your ID is a few weeks or a few months to get expired, or some of the IDs have already expired. So as an entity, as Nira, that is National Identification and Registration Authority, has come up with a plan to carry out mass renewal of national IDs across the country. So when this opportunity availed itself, Madame Cow tapped on me, said, please come and relay the information and the program that you have. Twenty seventh, that is when we are having a nationwide launch, when we are supposed to be registering everyone. But at the district level, we are giving priority to the stakeholders. That is heads of departments, even your subordinates. As long as you get in touch with us, we should be in position to come to your office to give you priority. We know you're busy. For example, Uganda prisons, the police, I've already talked to them. I would have shared with the Office of the RDC, the Cow, the administrators, even some of the councillors around. Right now, I'm going to URA to give them priorities. So that once we roll out to the public, of course, masses are going to turn up. We are trying to make sure that we give you priority, work on you, you proceed with your work as we proceed with national aid, etc. Thank you so much. In case you have people who are really busy in your offices, tap on them. Get in touch with me before we roll out to the public, we shall give you priority. This is entirely for national ID renewal, those IDs that are expiring. And in case we have someone, maybe who has been out of the country for long and had never been registered, we can also chip in and see how to help. It is entirely free of charge. No one should request for a penny. We shall actually roll out to the sub-counties and even to some key major parishes. So it is going to be that way. Thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
Ladies and gentlemen, I will ask my staff on the table over there, kindly help Yedida Justin with the mic, in case there are any questions regarding this. Does anyone have a question? No questions, that is good. So he'll just stay around, oh, there's a question there. Let's have a microphone over there, please. Oh, please give him the contact. And he's still around to guide you in case you need any clarification.
Thank you. My contact, I always use MTN, zero seven eight five, zero seven eight five, four two five, four two five, triple eight. My name is Brian. You can say Brian Nira. In case you have any inquiry, any question regarding Nira services, I've been positioned to respond. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Brian. If that's all there is for questions. Okay, Kevin, thank you. DJ, please just go on with.
February, every year.
Yes.
Christmas is on the twenty fifth of December.
Yes.
Labor Day is on the eighth of May, first of May. Women's Day, eighth of March. If you can, as a family, as a couple, find a day every year
Yes.
or twice a year and say that, kama mbaya, we are going to discuss finances.
Come what may.
Come what may. You mark it on the calendars, each of you knows. So that there is no running around after the other.
Yes.
That now you have, if I've told you, then they say, oh, we'll talk tomorrow, we'll talk next week. I have found that that kind of works.
Yeah, it's kind.
You just decide that this is the date we have chosen to talk money in our house.
Because we know seasons when we spend the most. The season of Christmas, the season of Eid, a season of Easter, season of going back to school. Which school do we take our kids to? The other person wants a more expensive school, but it's way beyond the income. So it's very important, I agree with you, Pumala, to have that day when you can sit and have that honest conversation and plan for your finances very well.
Oh, okay, yeah, I really love your advice as well, when you encourage us to have, the key is to understand knowledge that we have to have the conversation.
Yes.
Now, one of the things I've been hearing recently, in the recent past, I used to hear it in outside countries. But recently, I'm hearing Ugandans also debate about having joint accounts or separate accounts. Or at least a joint account that has all the finance, our expenses, money for expenses in, and then separate joint account. But it shows us that our money conversations are evolving.
Yeah.
So what is your advice regarding couples, especially married couples, having joint accounts versus separate accounts?
Yeah, thank you, Pumala. Now, having joint accounts versus separate accounts really depends on the couple. It's not a one size fits all like kind of scenario. But of course, it would be more hopeful if the couple considers having joint accounts, especially when they have common financial objectives to be achieved. For example, they are going to take a loan, they're going to get debt to meet their financial goal, and that loan has to be serviced on a monthly basis. And they agree and say, let's create a joint account. And on a monthly basis, each one of us can deposit money on that account so that the bank can offset the loan installment. In that particular case, it makes a lot of sense. We now have our school fees. Just two weeks ago, I was talking to an audience and telling them, you know, we knew that come third February, kids would be going back to school. So why didn't we plan? Why didn't we start earlier and have that joint account as a couple? And deposit money on that account within a particular period of time? So that by the time, we actually, we're actually going back to school. We don't have to borrow, commit to put the family house as collateral. So with a joint account, such things can be very well managed, because then you can know, whatever goes there cannot leave that account unless the two of us agree.
Okay.
So that is very, very important. But beyond that, on the other hand, it depends on the couple in question. Because there are couples whereby, unfortunately, that is the reality, whereby money and love don't mix, especially joint management of funds. So every time that attempt to happen, then before you know it, quarrel, no one is seeing each other. And then before you do, you have more problems than the desired benefits of having a joint account. In that particular case, it would make sense for the couples to have separate accounts. But they should have common objectives they want to achieve as a couple. And the community to say that if it is time for this and this and that, then me, I'll be able to cater that kind of expense. But if it comes to school fees or when it comes to, you know, then I can be able to. So you can still have a healthy financial relationship, even with separate accounts. But the most desirable option is to have a joint account, because it builds financial discipline.
A joint account, you mean mostly for common objectives?
Absolutely.
Common financial objectives.
Absolutely. We want to plan for retirement together and we need to be putting some money on that account, that kind of thing.
Okay, okay, that makes a lot of sense to me. I think I've seen places where people decide and say, for the things that we are going to use in the house together.
Yes.
Let's say, we know we are going to need to pay school fees. We know we need to buy yaka.
Yeah.
We know we need to pay for Netflix.
Yes.
We know we need to pay for water bills. So you buy groceries every month. So I've known people to make a budget. And everything that you know in advance has to be paid, you put in the joint account.
Yes.
But the joint account usually needs either one or two signatories, you can decide. We are all putting in, but the person who is handling the payments might be one partner. And that partner has access.
Exactly.
So I think I totally understand that joint accounts. Abroad, I've known families that all their money goes into the joint, but I don't think Africans are there yet. I don't know if Ugandans are there yet.
Ugandans, we still have a long way to go, but we can get there, surely. It takes discipline, it takes commitment to actually have these things happen.
Yeah, we can get there. And I think maybe just to piggyback off that.
Yeah.
Sometimes, and I think this comes down to our cultural backgrounds.
Yes.
Because in Africa and in Uganda, the man is still seen as the provider.
Yes.
So provision meaning that they are catering to the higher amount of expenses. So in a typical African or Ugandan household, how would you advise couples to split expenses without arguing? Like, how does it turn that you can say, for me, how do you have a conversation that is, for me, my money, I'll pay for groceries, weekly groceries. For you, pay for yaka. Or me, I'm going to pay for rent, you pay for Netflix. Or you pay for school fees. How, what is your advice regarding conversations about splitting expenses or splitting income?
Yeah, it's extremely important for the couples to devise ways of splitting these expenses. Because now, when you think about incurring them, just having them incurred by one party or one member of the family or the family head, it becomes a bit hard. So therefore, in that particular case, it would be very important for the couple to reflect on the different kind of expenses that they are likely to incur. In fact, the expenses go beyond the utility costs, electricity, you know, water, to the extent of burial costs, to the extent of weddings, introductions. And culturally, a man is expected to provide.
Yes, culturally.
But how do we harmonize that without necessarily suffocating the financial goals of the couple? So in that particular case, it would be very important for the couple again to identify the different expenses that they are likely to incur as a couple. And then too, once they have identified, agree that different expenses can be met by different, maybe spouses. To say, for me, the man, I can cater for, say, school fees. In most cases, in Uganda, men seem to be earning higher than women, in most cases, for different reasons. So school fees, really, a man, you can, and rent, because these are big, big expenses. But again, it depends on the income. Because if you have a seventy thirty income ratio whereby the man is earning seventy percent, the other is earning only thirty percent, ideally, the expenses should be met in that line as well. So you don't come and expecting the wife to actually pay for school fees when she's earning only thirty percent of what you're earning. So it is important, I think.
Good morning, once again, ladies and gentlemen. We just had breakfast, is it the problem? I can't hear you. Good morning, everyone. That's better. It sounds like the tea had some sugar and the yellow bananas are working. Branch manager, Ambara, please, please come to the front as well, Ambara Branch. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, once again, we want to thank you for coming, making time of your very busy schedules to come and listen to us. We are also here to listen to you. The deputy governor is here, members of the EXCOM and staff, and we shall be very, very glad to hear from you. My name is Victor Walusimbi. I work with the, right now, communications department, Bank of Uganda, and will be transitioning soon. I'll be your emcee, and my co-emcee is Ronald Ruwagwagou, Usheni Shakam Municipal Council staff. Thank you. We'll be coordinating this event, so if you have any issue to communicate, please go through us. You might also reach out to any of the people wearing the white t-shirts, their Bank of Uganda staff, and we'll be good to go. So I will start us off right now and request that we all arise for the anthems. Thank you very much. Let's remain standing, please, as we receive the prayer to bless this function. And I will invite the Episcopal vicar, Reverend Father John Bosco Trenomujini.
Almighty, ever living God, we thank you that you have gathered us here. We thank you for all who are ensuring that our country, Uganda, remains securely in financial matters. We thank you for our president. We thank you for the ministers. We thank you for all those that are involved in this business of finance for our country. And we pray, Lord heavenly father, that you give them all the wisdom they need, like the wisdom you gave to King Solomon to take care of that kingdom. But we also, we ask at this moment that you give them wisdom, our leaders in financial matters, you give them wisdom to ensure that our country remains financially secure. We pray that you be with us here at this moment, in this gathering, in this meeting. You bless all our ideas, you bless all our thoughts, you bless all our conversations that they may continue to give you glory and that this nation remains a nation worth to live in. We ask all this through Christ our Lord. And we pray that you bless us in the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit.
Thank you very much for that powerful prayer. Father? And quickly, deputy governor, to let you know, we had a very, very engaging session yesterday opened by Alhaj Jaffa Basadiyavala, LC five district chairperson. He was here early and on time. And also we had the assistant RDC with nearly 500 people, mainly members of the public and also the universities here. It was engaging. We had more questions that we could answer given the time. And we promised sir that we have to come back and arrange for a radio talk show to take all the questions that were received. And right now, ladies and gentlemen, I'll go through the protocol. I request that we go through it once because we have to release you by one. We know you're very busy, but we also know that there's an election process that's going on today, right down there, and many of you might be involved in one way or another. So we shall be as quick as possible. Deputy Governor sir, Professor Augustus Nwagawa, thank you for coming. LC five chairperson, Alhaj Jaffa Basadiyavala, thank you for coming again. His worship, the mayor, the Kao Busheni, thank you mama for coming. Members from the religious institutions, I see some of them here. Members from the security organs, I see the prisons and police as well. The ExCom or executive committee of the Bank of Uganda management. Representatives from regulatory institutions, especially in the financial space. Members from Busheni district and the municipality officials from there, we recognize you. Members or representatives from the supervised financial institutions, the different ones that we have here. Staff from Bank of Uganda, we recognize especially the branch manager, Ambara branch, who is a great, he stepped out. Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, you are all very, very welcome. Once again, thank you for coming and coming in large numbers. I will ask that we get opening remarks from the district leadership and I will invite Alhaj sir to come and once again do your thing. Alhaji, you asked questions yesterday and unfortunately when they were being answered, you had gone to your very busy office. But we shall dispatch Alex over there to come to you personally before you leave. Thank you.
Thank you very much, communication officer, Bank of Uganda. Our chief guest, none other than the deputy governor of the central bank of the Republic of Uganda, our own brother, Professor Augustus Nwagawa. And your team, religious leaders present. We have Episcopal vicar for Ambara, Adais, Adais is the carried. And reverends, shakes, political leaders present, taking cost staff, the business fraternity. Praise, ladies and gentlemen. I want to take this senior owner, a guest of honor, to welcome you to this mighty district called Busheni. I understand we've been here for many reasons, but this is your first time to come here as the deputy governor of the central bank of the Republic of Uganda. We congratulate you, congratulations. And even we want to thank his excellency the president, who appointed you. We have trust in him because we are sure and we know you that we are going to do a good work for this republic. I want on the same note, on behalf of the participants, on my own behalf, to thank the organizers of this workshop. Yesterday I told them that it was my first time in history to attend such a gathering or workshop organized by Bank of Uganda, especially at regional level. Because we normally see you on banknotes and mark coins as Bank of Uganda. And even at times, we see you in newspapers and televisions. But yesterday, I partially attended, but we learned a lot, some of the functions of the central bank and other issues that are related to the Bank of Uganda and the community. And some of us didn't know that we can directly or indirectly transact the business with you as Bank of Uganda. But as we talk now, we are having taken cost staff, business community, religious leaders and other top notch leaders of this mighty district. Yesterday it was the general public and I understand these people will take the message to the grassroots and make sure that our people benefit from this experience. Yesterday I raised a few issues, but I will not go into detail. One of them was the issue of how best we as Ugandans can swiftly access domestic payments, which seems to be sluggish compared to international payments. Because I understand here we had a person who is responsible for payments and your docket. When you see payments as far as payments are concerned, for example, if you are transacting, I may take an example as Busheni district of government. Sir, you understand that we are having a single treasure account with you, but when you are transacting business with you, it takes some time. Make sure that at least we execute our duties as quickly as possible. So I compared it with when someone is transacting under international payment. I mentioned one of the payment, a mode of payment on international scene. The, for example, I gave the example shift. It takes no time for you to pay someone New York or to you in Japan than paying someone through our domestic payments. So that's why I was owing an explanation through you, your people, to see how best we can at least move. Another issue that I can raise at this material time, I understand we are part of the East African community and I know deputy governor, for us, we do transactions with our sister countries within the East African community. But when you look at the exchange rate or rates, for example, Uganda shillings against one rupees francs. Last week I was in the Republic of Rwanda, I was attending a party. When you see the exchange rate between here and there, it is two point five shillings against one rupees francs. So when you are moving out, but when you are coming in, the exchange rate is different, it becomes two point eight against one rupees franc. So as an East African community, because I know we have harmonization, how best can you harmonize exchange rate as Bank of Uganda and Minister of Finance as part of government to see how best we can swiftly transact the business together, assist us in this arrangement? And lastly, deputy governor, I want this, maybe you will take it as a search. And when I was studying, I hold a master in the business administration and I have a BBA, a option finance. So for example, if we start with one million and you go to the border between Uganda and Kenya and you exchange one million Uganda shillings against Kenya shillings and you get the same amount according to the exchange rate there. And when you move, you don't even touch any single coin from what you have exchanged and you go to the border between the Republic of Kenya and the Republic of Tanzania at Namanga, for example. And you exchange the same amount that you exchanged at border Obusia O Malaba and you get Tanzanian shillings. And you move along the East African region. You go to the border between Tanzania and Burundi, or what they call it in the Somo. And you go, you exchange the same amount between Rwanda, Burundi and currency against the rupees francs, same amount, one million. And you enter Rwanda and you come again at Katuna border post. You know, at times you may get less the amount of one million that you started with. I don't know what is the cause, maybe you take an interest in that and see how best to handle. Lastly, I want once again to welcome you to this important meeting as civic leaders of this district. And I hope we are going to have a fruitful discussion and we are waiting for the message from you. We know you as an economic guru and we trust you and we hope we are going to improve a lot as far as the monetary policy and other functions of the central banks, bank are concerned. And lastly, I want to welcome our resident district commissioner, Mr. Peter Ngavirano, who is... Yes, Ime Ngavirano. Kindi, na iziri, na rugari chige diro guru, ya arukunjiri, kind is doing a good work. Echi ndi, ni mbasava, apology, guest of honor, I will be leaving because I'm a participant in today's elections and most of our politicians are not around. But I made sure that I will welcome you on behalf of other politicians and make sure that you feel comfortable that we are really with you. I want to introduce our chief administrative officer, Mr., madam, sorry, Madame Fiona Sanu. We have the municipal town clerk, municipal town clerk. So Ni Bie Bie, kani ndoxima, I want to thank the staff of Bank of Uganda who came and made this organization, this arrangement. Because, Mr. Deputy Governor, we have a person in the names of Waiswa who was heading it. I think they've had a good environment and they've done wonders and miracles. Let me invite our resident district commissioner, who will be here for some time as I arrange my political campaign. Because political, politics is politics. Ni jangu wa na professor, okazuro zahwaziri yeva. Professor is a former presidential aspirant. So that's why we have his excellency the president.
Thank you very much, our host and district governor. When a deputy governor, here we have a district governor, not a district chairperson. Our guest and my mentor and my lecturer, the district governor and your team, the district chairperson stroke governor and your team. Chief administrative officer invited guests, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ngavirano Ime. I'm a student of professor in nineteen ninety-eight and I'm what I am because of you sir. I take this opportunity first and foremost to welcome you to Busheni and to show you that the security situation is calm. that the security situation is calm. There are so many activities going on, including what the district chairperson has highlighted. And I can assure you that his seat is comfortable. You will still find him here, 2026, 31, Insha Allah. Other factors constant. I want to thank the central government, the central bank leadership for choosing Bushein and the Greater Bushein region to come and interact with us on issues of economics, on issues of the macro, the micro. People have been asking, how is the inflation? Would want hear more about the inflation rate? Are we going up? Are we going down? Would want hear more about the high interest rate in the bank? Are you giving these commercial banks money at a high interest rate and therefore the impact comes back to people who are taking loans, we? But above all, we want to thank you for controlling the inflation. Want to thank you for micro and macro stability of the economy. Would want to thank you for financial inclusion, where an ordinary person from Lake Edward, where an ordinary person from deep inside Mparo can access financial services through mobile money, transact through the bank, withdraw through the bank and cut out business without necessarily going through Stanby Centenary, Micro, Pride or other financial institutions. So that kind of financial inclusion has not only helped an ordinary person, but it has also accelerated business, trade and transaction unlike in the past days. Ours is to get message from you, but we want to assure you that among the many districts I have had an opportunity to serve. We are not yet there as Bushein, as Greater Bushein, but at least we are somehow. We are we are there, we are in the middle income. We are moving towards the middle income, though we still have the gap between the rich and the poor. But we thank the NRM government that that gap is being worked out through the parish development model and other government interventions that we are keenly monitoring, that we are keenly implementing to effect that by 2040. At least all of us, we can be in the money economy. With those very many remarks, once again, I want to thank the participants for finding time to come and be part of us. I want to thank the financial institutions that are here for the good job you are doing. I only pray that if it does not affect the economy now that the deputy governor is here and you have ever been part of us, though not at that level, the issue of renting rent, renting rent from commercial banks, at least we need a comment such that we can borrow at a favorable interest rate that can make us invest, make returns instead of working for financial institutions, especially those who are getting salary loans. I want also to acknowledge that if Bank of Uganda can think about small products for an ordinary person who is graduating from PDM but managed to open an account to his post bank, Centenary Bank, and he left some 20, 30 thousand and he's saving money from enterprises, the kind of loan that can be tailored towards supporting that ordinary person at an affordable interest rate. With those very many remarks, Professor, the good things I have as a result of your knowledge and intervention, the macro and the micro, the price, the production, the national income, taxation and all that that came through you and I think I give you credit. The other shortcomings are as a result of my own weakness, but not your intervention. I thank you and wish you a very comfortable stay in Bushein. And security is okay. When you see people moving around, you know that we are managing NRM elections at the district level in the lower part. There is order and and wa wire, they normally say here, somebody will interpret for you. Osuirenyoko. Nuwesho. Now that we have a deputy governor here, that is our governor. Do I add on? At the moment, we have, that is our cow, until when peace makes confirmed decision. Until 2026, we still have governor deferred as our district chairperson. And even the center holds the same thing. So if you don't mind, even after 2026, for the purposes of politico and micro, macro and micro stability, the status quo will not harm the Reverend and all other people from God and my country. I thank you.
Thank you so much, our other DC Bushein. Once again, I'm Ronald Rawatwago, the MC of the day. Our deputy governor, allow me introduce you some of the dignitaries around. Are you right on the protocol, ready observed? So allow me to introduce the district leaders around district councillors, please wave to the governor, district councillors. I'm Sinka Kamba. Then Honorable Councillors from Bushein, Shaka Municipal Council, please. I know you are the majority here. Thank you for coming. We have the district technical staff, please wave to the governor. We have the municipal technical staff, please wave. We have Reverend Mweyunjie, please wave to us. Thank you for coming. We have the municipal development forum members, please wave to us. We have the representatives from financial institutions. We have Centenary in the house, Stanby Bank. We have Equity Bank. We have Post Bank. We have Yuga Ford. We have Finance Trust Bank. I saw Anobi there. Thank you. We have Plaid Bank, DFCU Bank. Then we have representative from Sarkos. I saw great exchange teachers, Sarko. Thank you, Bamacha Community, Sarko. Thank you. Then we have the Regional Head of Insurance, Regulator Sorate, Asa, wave to us. We have representative from April Seale. Thank you for coming. We have representative from Yakaviris Farmers Group. Thank you. We have representative from schools. I saw head teacher Saint Kagwa Primary School. Then we have other political leaders, LOC two of the area, Mr. Sampirwe. LOC one for Centralwood, Milton, wave to us. Thank you so much. We shall keep on introducing. But on my own behalf, Deputy Governor, I want to thank you. In the year 2007, I also worked under your consult, RIV consult when we were moving around Uganda, collecting data on behalf of the Iggy. So you also contributed to my success and why I'm here. So thank you so much. We have the representative from Forces Uganda Police. Thank you for coming. We have the representative from Uganda prisons. We have the Commissioner, Victor Abeho. Thank you for coming, MC.
Thank you very much, Ronald. You realize there was a slight change in the program and the district leadership addressed us first because they requested that they really, really needed to exit a bit earlier. So now I will invite the Acting Bank Secretary. This is the person responsible for ensuring that these engagements happen, that the bank comes to the people and listens to what the people have to say to it. So kindly welcome with me Dr. Kenneth Egessa to address us. Dr. Egessa, you will please invite the deputy governor.
Thank you very much, MC Victor. I will align myself with the protocol that has been appropriately observed by the MC. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this town hall meeting. It's both an honor and a privilege to be here with you today and on behalf of the Bank of Uganda delegation, I extend our sincere appreciation for you showing up here today and for the warm reception that we have received and the generous hospitality of the leadership here. We feel very welcome and we thank you for the warm welcome. So we are gathered here in the spirit of engagement, which is an opportunity for open dialogue. We want to dialogue with you openly and we want the central bank to speak with the people it serves in a very open and transparent way so that we can build trust and ensure that our work works for you. The work that we do at the Bank of Uganda works for each and every one of you. And that's why we brought the boss. The boss is a very busy man, but we felt that it's very important for him to touch base with all of you so that he can tell you what we do and you can have a chance to ask questions. Allow me to share with you the bank's renewed strategic direction. Our revised mission statement is to promote price stability and a sound financial system in support of social economic transformation in Uganda. This mission underscores our commitment to ensuring that the institutions we regulate, whether banks or payment service providers, deliver efficient and secure services to you. So if you have issues on whether the services you're getting are efficient, if you have issues on whether the services you're getting are secure or not, you have a chance today to raise those issues with the deputy governor. And so the Bank of Uganda also through this mission aims to ensure that the value of your money is preserved over time. So if you have questions on money, we are here to answer. If you have questions on the value of our currency, the deputy governor is here to respond to those questions. So in line with this mission, the Bank of Uganda has adopted a very inclusive and people-centered communication strategy. That's why we are here with the people. Yesterday, we were with the general public. Today, we are with you, the leaders. And our expectation is that after this engagement, some of the messages that we'll share with you, you can take them to some of the people that you lead. So we recognize that our policies and decisions are often very technical, but they must be understandable and relevant to the citizens they are designed to benefit. So this calls for clarity in the way we communicate. It calls for openness. It calls for consistency on how we communicate and therefore we are going beyond traditional communication. We are going beyond radio. We are going beyond television. We are going beyond newspapers to more innovative ways of communicating with you such as social media, public exhibitions, programs with schools. How many of you have heard of the university quiz that we've been sponsoring? And also town hall meetings such as this. Meetings such as this one for the past nine years have served as vital platforms for connecting with the public and Bushein is no exception. You are our key stakeholders and your voices and experiences with the financial sector greatly matter to us. Our renewed mission focused on socio-economic transformation is ultimately about people. It's about you. In our previous engagements in other parts of the country, we have been deeply concerned by rising cases of digital fraud, predatory moneylenders demanding national identities as collateral, pyramid schemes and many other things we came to learn. These are serious threats that often target unsuspecting individuals. Let me stress, your first line of defense is awareness. We are here to create awareness. That really underscores our purpose of being here today. Understanding how to identify fraudulent schemes is critical. Always consider your safety first. Never, never share confidential information such as your ATM PIN, mobile banking passwords, one-time verification codes with anyone because that is how fraudsters take advantage. Fraudsters, remember, always pose as legitimate institutions or trusted individuals. So do not trust anyone you're not sure is legitimate. Let me also mention that it is illegal for moneylenders to take national IDs as collateral. Please do not surrender your IDs to anyone in exchange for a loan. Should you encounter such cases, please report them to Bank of Uganda either through our branch offices, head office or via our contacts, which our team will provide on phone numbers, WhatsApp and email. But we also encourage you to report to law enforcement officers. Let me highlight that we are joined today by the deputy governor, as you are aware, and a dedicated team from Bank of Uganda that he permissioned to come here. And all these staff will be available to answer your questions on a range of topics, stretching from treasury bills and bonds to the agricultural credit facility, the Small Business Recovery Fund, monetary policy, inflation, exchange rates, licensing and supervision, financial literacy and payment systems. The deputy governor will speak at length on these topics after which he will take your questions. Also present with us here are regulators of other financial institutions, our sister regulatory agencies. And we also have commercial banks that have branches here in Bushein and payment operators. If you have specific questions to the bank branches here or to the payment operators operating here, please raise those specific questions. Do not fear. The deputy governor is here. Those institutions will respond to your specific question. So take advantage of their presence here. At this point, let me let me encourage you to actively participate in today's session. Ask questions, seek clarity, empower yourself with the knowledge that the team brings here today. empower yourself with the knowledge that the team brings here today. This is the goal of today's engagement. So don't leave without learning something new. In conclusion, I'd like to once again thank you for joining us today. To thank the leadership of Busheni for making this possible. We know that there are other competing events. And also to request you to give us your feedback before you leave. We have a small questionnaire where I would like to know your view about this event. It is now my singular honor and pleasure to invite our Deputy Governor, Professor Augustus Nwagba, to come and tell you what we do. Professor, you're most welcome.
I think you'll allow me to do that. His actions, the president, have got to achieve peace and security. So President, I want to tell you. I want to talk about peace and security. Twaga Mamurungu, Professor, Uragwa College, is a cross sanct for economic activity. There is no economic activity that can take place in an environment that is insecure, that is volatile, that is chaotic. So we want to thank the president for creating an environment where we can do business, where the Ugandans can do business and work. So we want to thank government and particularly the president himself because he's very, very particular in this. This decision, he has been very, very consistent for creating peace and security. I work in Somalia right now. Before he appointed me to come to the Central Bank, I was working with the African Development Bank. I've been in the Bank of Africa. I've been in Mahangatan. As a new bank leader, I should be the co-chairman. African Development Bank had requested me to help them to work in countries which are insecure. I've been in Somalia, I've been in South Sudan. The security people have been finding me there. And our UPD in Somalia, they are the ones who have been protecting us to build market economic systems. The Central Bank there, Minister of Finance, South Sudan, Central African Republic. In Guinea-Bissau, they had added Libya to me before the president brought me here in the Central Bank. So we have been... We have been... I'm trying to remember. I want to tell you. Your house guard is important, you let her go. That's when you will know that your house guard is what? Is important. So I want to tell you. 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 You have to be very careful because we have a governor here. So when you talk about a governor, please be very careful. Which governor you are firing to? Which governor? I don't want to cause problems here. So we want to congratulate Busheni District. I want to tell you. I want to tell you. Bank of Uganda also have come from Central Bank with me. This Busheni district is a model district. It's a model district. What you do in Busheni here is what other people do. At Makere, we used to say, for me, I was in Rumumba. Those were in North Court. Those were in North Court. Here, you know what your mantra was. We, in North Court, people in Makere, they used to say, "We either win or you lose." So in Busheni, other districts, Busheni can either win or other districts lose. That's how they are. This district, we are very proud about this district. It's a model district. It's a district when you are coming, even when you are just coming to Busheni, you just feel good. Another area where you are similar with is when you are moving. I studied at the London School of Economics. I was at the University of London. And when you are moving from London, the next town you go to, Warwick. It is Warwick. The foreign town is Coventry. The foreign town is Birmingham. It is on that route. And even I had a job there. And you can imagine the job I was doing. They had given me a job when I reached there, a student, to dig graves. That's what I was doing. And I earned a lot of money. I earned a lot of money. I had that circuit of... That's why I knew it very, very well. I worked in London Coventry, Warwick Coventry, Birmingham. And I was making a lot of money. I was making a lot of money. Except the Ugandans, you have been thieves, most of you, to steal government money. And you have become more rich than some of us. But I came here when I had some quite a good amount of money as a student. So when you are coming, you are along that route, especially when you are arriving towards Coventry. It is exactly this route, the way we came, is similar. So we are very, very proud with this district. You almost think that you're actually in Coventry in the United Kingdom. You have people's homes, how they have made homes, how they have made farms. People are having, taking milk to the dairy, coffee. The way you look after your banana plantations, we are simply, simply proud of Busheni District. I wanted that to come out. So when we are here, we are also aware of the people we are talking to. And so I wanted my just team to know that, that this is a district in terms of education, which is the same as Makere University. I want to talk about Makere University. Makere, the university, is located in the city of Watu. Busheni, located in the city of Watu. I want to talk about Watu. I want to talk about Watu. My mother, I was number one, number one, number one. My mother died when I was in senior two. My father, I don't know, I even didn't see him. So I'm just there. When I do a mistake, please bear with me. Just bear with me. For me, my father is God, my mother is also God. Those are the people who have looked after me. And of course, the church. For us in Kabali, the church is very strong and we are children of East African revival movement. So the mistakes we do, for us, the mistakes we do are ours. It is not for, from our parents. For us, the best miracle we suffered is of goodness, is of humanism, is of doing good, is of loving people. This is the best miracle that we suffered under East African revival. And so, my team in the Central Bank, I wanted you to know that, that when God has put you there, God has put you there for a purpose. You cannot be in the Central Bank by accident. And this is therefore something that you need to know. I have here a number of them. We have Director of Communications, you can stand up for recognition. Mr. Kenneth Egesa is there as our Communication Director for a purpose. I want you to know that. I don't think that God really put you there by accident. You have to know that. We have here Director Commercial Banks Pavilion. Huntington, where are you? And Huntington is here. He's the one in charge of all commercial banks to ensure that they are working properly, payments are done, checks are honored. And there are many other things which are in very difficult English, which we don't want to bring here. That is Huntington. Any question to do with the banks, then you are going to give it to Huntington. There is, we have here Director Agricultural Credit Facility and also Small Business Recovery Program. Hadjala Kasoli is here. Madame Hadjala Kasoli is here. Any question on agricultural finance? We have money which we can give you for agricultural financing. She's here. And the money is there, it is yours. You need to utilize it. And I know Busheni, how you are model farmers. We have here somebody who deals with institutions which are non-bank institutions. Martin, Martin, where are you? Martin is here. Non-banking institutions, including credit institutions. Then we have here Director of Research and Monetary Policy. Deo, Deo, where are you? Anything to do with the world? Why is this one of these? Why did we put exchange rate? The exchange rate, which we said in the Central Bank, is the rate which the commercial bank would use. And then it is eventually the rate which you people will come to borrow from the banks. Then we have here somebody who is in charge of financial markets to ensure... He's here. Moses, Moses, thank you very much. We have Director National Payments. And people have been asking now, we have a problem with payments. Can you imagine somebody getting a payment from London much easier than when the professor is paying you here? He's going to explain it to you. By the way, this is the same thing. When you are going to Nigeria, into Nigeria through Addis Ababa, Ethiopian Airlines, you take more time than in London. You are going to pass here, then you pass here, then the plane is not working. Today, it didn't work and so on and so forth. So it is the same thing also. So we are not surprised that he's going to explain some of the problems. And also, of course, we are not Denmark. We are not America. We are not, we are going to move Basoka Kavra to Gendamporampola. So some of the things, you are very lucky. You have the president who has been working on these matters. And he's very emphatic on making sure his security people can bring here their money and work on the systems. But there are problems which government is trying to solve, of course. Then we have Director Carlinse. We have Director Carlinse, the one who is responsible for making sure that we print money, the money is secured. It comes from wherever we print it from. It comes to interview, it is big, it is stored properly. It is distributed to commercial banks properly. Then the commercial banks bring it. The bad ones, we know where we keep it. Then we give good ones. Normally, come, we exchange it to you, you get such a things. Agnes, where are you, Akero? She's here, you see. Then we have Branch Manager, Mbarara. We also want to recognize you. We have very many branches, about nine of them. Kenneth? We have about nine branches. In Masaka, in Mbarara, in Mbale, in Arua, even in Kabali. We have, you have a big one in Mbarara. I passed in the one in Masaka. We had also to see what Masaka branch was bringing. So we have other branches where we want to bring services near to you. We have our brother here, Agure, who is here in Mbarara. We have our Nicholas, you can stand up for recognition, Dr. Nicholas Okod. We have, we work together in the same office. He's the one whom we work together at very, very close range. And we want to thank you, Nicholas, for the great work he was doing. He was also in the Department of Research initially, but now we brought him in the governor's office. So we want to thank you, team, and other people in the Bank of Uganda. Do we have other people stand up? Again, so these people can see all of us. Yes, remain standing, all of us remain standing. So these are the people who are in that Central Bank. And we want to thank you because of the good work you do. If the Central Bank is not working properly, then you have trouble. It is the heart of the economy of the country. The way you cannot really move your car unless the engines, the pistons are working very, very well and the engine is working. You can sit down, ladies and gentlemen. So we want to thank the honourable members of parliament who are here. This is the Commissioner, Mr. Ngabirun here, who was my very good student. I think you should also stand up for recognition. Because I told them, as my students, please, wherever you go, and you know it. I told you, you know it. I told them, represent me very effectively. Isn't that the thing I told you? Wherever you go, represent me very effectively. Then another thing I told them as they are getting out, I told them that for me, if you work very hard, I will give you the degree you deserve. I understand, as I understand, they don't want to give a student first class because they are going to, the lecturer is fearing that the student can't compete. How can you compete with me? And I told you, that there is no way by the time you compete with me, I have done a second degree, I have done a third degree, I am now on a fifth degree. So by the time you are older, because I'm older than your age, so how will you compete with me? You cannot. So I would tell them as a lecturer, I mean, what I want from you when I meet you. And as an economist, today, I don't want to pay for lunch. You are the one to pay for my lunch, and you are here. That's what I would tell them. That as an economist, I will keep my money. That today, you are the one to pay my lunch. And that's all, which I want from my students. I don't want anything else. For me, that's what I told them. So as therefore, LRC Chairperson, very glad to see our governor here. The Busheni, we have political and technical leaders. We have the religious leaders here. We have the distinguished participants. Ladies and gentlemen, we are very glad to be here. As I already said, I will be very short. And it is a profound honor, of course, to be here this morning in this beautiful land where we all love. And we are very proud, we have said. On behalf of the bank, therefore, we extend our deepest appreciation for all of us to be here and for the hospitality you have given us. Very, very good hospitality. And to extend our warm regards from Bank of Uganda and the team we have seen. We are truly delighted to be here and to engage with you in this very important meeting. And let me also acknowledge with sincere gratitude to the honourable members of parliament who are here and also the governor and the resident district commissioner who have spared the time even during elections. Today's elections, I would have been told in Kabali, which is also very hard to read. And we want to thank all of you, people who are good, who are here. So the Bank of Uganda, as I have already said, is a very, very important institution in the country. For me, I'm lucky, I've been working with quite a number of them, quite many of them. And the Central Bank is in charge of very many functions, which we are going to explain here. But many of them is the first one is to ensure, and this should be understood by everyone, that prices are stable. To ensure the price of goods are stable. Why? Because if you start, you are building, for example, you're constructing a building. A bag of cement is 34,000. You want to ensure that that bag of cement is 34,000 for the next four years minimum. Because that's when you will finish your building you are constructing. If you can imagine, if the next week is now 40,000, the next week is 45,000, how are you going to do? The building is going to store. And how about the other money which I already put it in? We call that money sank costs. That's what you call sank costs. It's set as a fee. It's set as a food. Imagine money died in that building. Haven't you been seeing those buildings? Some thing has been building house for 20 years. That money is dead. So the Central Bank makes sure that prices of goods are stable. That's the work we do there. And this is very, very important, ladies and gentlemen. Number two, we do what you call Banks Pavilion, making sure that commercial banks can work properly. Because if commercial banks are not working, then we are going to have trouble. I bring my cheque, the cheque is not honored. Can you imagine? When you are going to the bank, you know when you have somebody's money, what do you tell the person? Let's go together, isn't it? Sit there in the bank. Then I will be able to pay you. You are conscious that when you present another cheque, it is honored. And the person who does that work to ensure it is, your cheques are honored, is the Central Bank, which makes sure that these commercial banks are working. No commercial bank will tell a person to sit. You sit there and wait for an hour. It can't happen. If we hear from any commercial bank, let me warn the commercial banks who are here, that you are telling the people to sit even for 10 minutes, to wait. This is not acceptable. Anywhere in the world, it's not acceptable. And that's what we do. We ensure that commercial banks have sufficient money to honor your cheques, to do payments, to make sure when you are paying another person, it is also honored. And if you are even not there, you presented your cheque to pay professor, professor wrote a cheque to pay Jonathan here. And if I hear that Jonathan was not paid and yet I wrote the cheque, what is this? The central bank is very responsible for this. When we, I just wanted to, 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 to bring you to, to, to remember, especially those who are above fifty. When we say price stability, which in the English of the central bank is inflation. Volatility of, of, of prices. Remember before nineteen eighty-six, the, the, just for people who are young here, in nineteen eighty-six, financial year. Nineteen eighty-five to eighty-six, inflation, you can just do your research, inflation was one hundred and sixty percent. That's what it was, you can do research and find out. Now, how much inflation do we have? From one hundred and sixty, to be very specific, in financial year nineteen eighty-five, eighty-six, inflation was one hundred and sixty-one percent. Now it is three point five. This is what we are doing, this is what the, the central bank is doing, three point five percent. There is a country there where we had the Pope, this Pope who died recently, where he comes from. It's there, it has been having the highest level of inflation of about three hundred and twenty-seven percent, Argentina. Venezuela, four hundred and eighty percent. Zimbabwe here, at one time Zimbabwe was six million percent. You will find somebody on the, on the, on the kahuba with money going to buy bread. And you would find a lot of money in Zimbabwe towns, just brushed everywhere on the road, because the money had lost value. You would find a note of six million, a note, a bank note, ten million bank note. So when you see the central bank has been able to do this, making sure your prices, bread, five thousand, five thousand, five thousand. Last year, five thousand, this year, five thousand, you thank God. And also you thank government also. You don't thank us only as the central bank, you also thank government. Why do you need to thank government as well? Because when people bring here business, the people have bakeries, people are bringing here wheat, people are bringing here those things that make bread. As many of them are not Ugandans, also you need to know that, most of them are foreigners also who bring money here. These are foreign direct investment, F D Is. How much did we have of those in nineteen eighty-five financial year to eighty-six? Zero. Because of too much fighting, who is going to bring here money? Remember the, the president, Mushebin, had started fighting nineteen eighty, when they went, second of February, the war started in Luero and so on. Then we continue fighting and fighting, eighty-five to eighty-six, zero, nobody was bringing here money. Now, how much do we have, people who bring here money every year? Three point eight billion dollars, very big round of applause to, to. And when those bring here money, then we have those commodities in big supply. There are many people who are having goods to bring on the market. When big things are many on the market, there is more supply. When there's more supply. So demand and supply is the one which determines prices. Gaby, Gaby, former Feranga, per one shilling, that's been four francs per, uh, four Uganda shillings per one franc. Four Uganda shillings per one franc, our currency has been twenty-five percent value of the, of the Rwanda franc. What determines, just listen, just the way, this money which you see is also a commodity, another commodities. What determines the price of a commodity relative to another? It's also forces of demand and supply, how many people want your currency? Like how many people want bread? The bread will go up, the price of bread will go up. How many people want bread? People have reduced those who want bread, the bread will go down, he will even give you free bread, even if you pay him tomorrow, because it will go bad. So what determines the price of Uganda shillings relative to the price of another country is the forces of demand and supply, nothing else. Of course, there are other countries like Russia, like, uh, like Japan, like, uh, uh, China. Again, whose governments determine, this one, my friends here will explain it more, because that's what they do on daily basis. There are countries who say the central bank will determine the price of how Uganda shillings will be bought. How many dollars will be bought by one Uganda shilling? For us, we are okay, the president said, here, the president said, no, the price of Uganda shillings, one dollar, which currently is three thousand six hundred and forty. Three thousand six hundred and forty. Why is it not one thousand? Why is it not five hundred? Why is it not ten thousand? Why is it three, six, four, zero? Why is it three, six, five, five? Three, six, five, one? Three, six, five, eight? Three, six, four, eight, stable? Our exchange rate has been very, very stable and this is what we do in the bank, this is what we do. Why? What determines that? Is only again one factor, only one factor. It is determined, Professor's and the bank, is determined by what you call the, the capital inflows. The amount of money we earn, the amount of dollars we earn as a government, as a country, is on which we determine the price of a shilling against the dollar. It is therefore very, very important to make sure you are engaged in activities which generate money by exporting things. When we export things, when our, our, you have been, some of you have been castigating government, why our gurus in Oman, in, in Jordan, and, and, and they are there, their house gurus, they are being beaten and so on and so forth. Let me talk now as, as a deputy governor of the central bank or as a professor of economics. If you find me on Sunday, preaching in the Old Saints or in the Saint Francis Chapel, I will talk something else, please don't mistake me. I will be talking about something else properly, but now I'm doing my job, which the president told me to do. What determines that? Is the amount of money we have earned. So these gurus who are there, we earn nine hundred million dollars per year from them, for example. Then the doctors, the engineers who are in America, in Britain, in where, and I was there last year in Detroit, I was in Houston, I was in Saint Anthony, everywhere. They bring here like seven hundred dollars, seven, seventy, seven hundred million. The gurus, these house gurus, bring here nine hundred million, they even beat these doctors and engineers. When you add that, it's one point six billion dollars. Then we have tourism. U N had, United Nations also requested me in twenty nineteen to determine all, all of you, your fathers, mothers, sons, brothers, how much money they bring here. They bring here one point, about one point four billion dollars. When we add that to the one of, of tourism, we get about three point two billion dollars from outside. Then personnel, people who export coffee, coffee we earned, about one point two billion dollars. And we want to congratulate Busheni, because we know Busheni contributed to a lot of this. That's why we want to really congratulate. Miruk, Miruk also have now very many billions of litres, about four billion litres of, of, of Miruk. And this is cuts of Busheni. So if this Miruk, for example, we were not sending it in a diary here and sending it abroad, processing it and so on like Lato. That's why we need to congratulate Lato. Then you have money coming in. When you have a lot of dollars coming in here, it is the same thing, like, they are the same thing, when you have a baker that have a lot of bread. And many people who are, who need bread now will find the bread. So anybody who needs dollars, dollars are here, dollars are in the Forex Bureau, dollars here, dollars, 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 price of dollar down, will go down. But when there is no dollar, nobody exported anything, coffee price went down, these gurus are harassing that they are being beaten in Oman, nine hundred million dollars, they are all come back. Where would you put them? Nobody is exporting flowers, no fish export, no dollar everywhere, everywhere Forex Bureau is there, dollar, no dollar, price of dollar will be in the shilling here. I think the things you had understood now. So what the president wants from you, what the central bank wants from you, what everybody wants from you? Is to ensure that we all engage in an activity which can give us food here, but also you are able to, to, to export. And then the government can do what? Can now buy medicines, medicines, we don't buy them in Uganda shillings. All this equipment of our security forces, which equipment can we buy in Uganda shillings? We buy them in what? In the dollars, this money which we, you are using in your pocket, this, those pieces of paper you are calling money, they are not even called money. Those things just belong to the central bank. And if you are saying, I have, I'm very rich, I have money. If you are very rich, you think you are very rich, you have a lot of money in your pocket, let the price of, of, of meat be fifty thousand a kilo and you tell me how rich you are. You should just thank these people who are making sure that you have, what you are carrying you is value, is the value which are written there, fifty thousand note. That's why we write there the word Lego tender, there is a small word we write there, Lego tender for fifty thousand shilling. Which means when you present your fifty thousand note, which is not yours, it belongs to us. For you, what is yours is the value which, which is just, which is just represented there. That's why when something happens on it, you bring it, haven't you been bringing it to commercial banks? And they give you a new one, why do you bring it? If it was yours, why don't you keep it the way you keep your bed, the way you keep your cow, the way you keep your other property? It is the value which you are carrying and that value is determined by the work which these people do. The one who keep that value, to ensure that the fifty thousand is fifty thousand. When you buy a bag of cement, they will give you a balance of sixteen thousand. And when that carries, something happens on it, we, you bring it to the commercial bank, we exchange it, we give you something new. Why? Because it belongs to us. Now, when you continue spoiling it, keeping it poorly, and I've been seeing most of you in the church. You want to pull out money and wherever Episcopal vicarates here, these people, the way they put money in the church, I don't know what's wrong with you Ugandans. Even you in the Busheni, people who have a lot of money and who know you have a lot of money in your households. Somebody brings out money, just get, uh, uh, gets money out of your pocket. You see how I, 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 I put, put money here? Put, put, put out money here, put money in the basket, in the, in the, in the church. Why do you now want to squeeze it, then they say, you are doing, you don't want them, anybody to see, why do you do that? And by the time now you are squeezing it, you are, now this money now, I don't know what material we can use. To ensure that when you, you, you are squeezing it, when you squeeze it like three times, we need now a new note which we have to print. That one I can assure you, these commercial banks which are here, this is most of the work they do, also in their counter, they receive bad money, which you have, you have, you have not been able to keep aware. When they bring now the central bank, we spend a lot of money on what? Uh, thank you. We spend a lot of money, I, I don't know, the, the, the Huntington is here and other people in, in currency. If they tell you amount of money we spend on now printing new ones, why do you want to do that? What is the same money would have used to do other things, to pay our soldiers very well, pay our security forces, pay lecturers in the universities, pay our nurses, the one who call frontline workers in government. And so what am I saying? Make sure you look after the currency very, very well. For you, what you, you need here is the value of the fifty thousand here, this thing is not yours, this, this, this thing, in the, the English of the professors of the central banks, called fiat. This fiat money, fiat currency. And what the fiat means, in case some of us don't know, it means the, initially, the, the, the money, this money here, on the total. Total, all the total money you have in pocket, we have in the commercial banks, add it together. The one in where, everywhere, the one our people who work in London have, use it to be equal to the amount of gold, also which we have in New York. Now, that thing did not work until nineteen seventy-one, it stopped. So now the amount of money which we have is on the equivalent, the value is equivalent to what the government of Uganda government has told you. It is the authority of government which is telling you this fifty thousand, and that's why the word Lego tender is, it means fiat. And this government authority which says this is fifty thousand, it has not told you it is twenty, it is fifty, that's what the government has told you. So what the government has told you, this is fifty fiat currency, it is not even backed by gold, this thing is not backed by gold or by any metro. We don't have any country now in the world whose currency is backed by gold, tell you. It stopped nineteen seventy-one by Richard Nixon, who was president of America. And the reason, to be very specific, on twenty-second of August nineteen seventy-one, the reason was simple, because America borrows a lot. And if they wanted to borrow, America has now its seven missions across the world, including ours in Entebbe. So America would now say, what do we do? If you want now to, to have another mission, spend more money in security, they would now want, where do we have gold now to be equal to the currency we have, they would not do it. So they said, okay, let's stop, currency is equivalent to gold. Now everyone has currency equivalent to what the government has said that we should print. So please, look after money very, very well, don't, don't, don't think that this we just, the bank, the central bank just prints, we print using water. We print using dollars, it's not Uganda shillings, we pay in dollars to get this. So look after it very, very well, what has the deputy governor said? Let's look after the currency very well, those who go to church, bring out very well in the basket, nobody is telling you to hide what are you hiding. And when you, I see you hiding, that's why also you hiding any other things, you are not hiding money only. Lastly, and as I finish, is that the payment system is going to be explained very well and I sit down. We play a pivotal role in payments and our payments are done, uh, under swift, Uganda we are so under swift. This means that if I pay you, and I write, the, the government of Uganda allows us to write, allows me to write a cheque in dollars as well. So if I say pay Nicholas here, one million, I would write a cheque, Stanley Big Bank, pay Nicholas in D F C U, in Saint Teneri, in housing finance, Equita Bank. Do you know that cheque? I'm paying Nicholas here from Stanley Big Bank to Equita Bank here, it first goes to, 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 can you imagine? First goes to America, under swift system to be cleared, can you imagine? So sometimes therefore you have problems of, 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 of payments, but the central bank manages payments, both domestic and foreign. It has a clearing house which makes sure all the cheques from all banks are, 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 are paid properly and in good time, as well as cheques managed outside are paid very well and in good time. And also we are, we congratulate the, the mobile money, these are Finitex, they are financial technology companies, Finitex, who are managing also this mobile bank. We have agency banking now and we have other systems of payment, this one we want to congratulate them, because they have added, bringing other people into the financial system, people who didn't have been there. And this is very good, uh, the growth of mobile money has transformed the, the, the economy here. If I'm sending, sending money to people on my farm, I don't need to, to even go to the bank, I just get their money, pay them and so on and so. Like in Somalia, for us in Somalia, we don't have money, no. I also want the, the central bank here, people to know. I've told you, we have an office in Somalia, Somalia, we don't have any money, this one, no. For us, we use digital, there's actual digital dollars, US dollars, even beggars beg by, buy, buy, buy mobile phone. If he doesn't have a mobile phone, he has a piece of paper which has a mobile phone, it's over the friend or sister or mother. And you know the Muslims are very good in, 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 in dealing with vulnerable people. He goes home with about hundred thousand in Uganda currency. So you do, so many countries are moving towards the digital. So when you are paying people on your farms, please, why are you bothered with, go to the bank with the draw money for what? Just get names of your farm, people on. Just get names of your farm, people on, Miru King, coffee plantation, banana, just have their mobile. Why do you want to send it to your manager, who is also going to have problems with them, he is not going to pay so and so? Get your money just through. Then those who are managing Finitex, those who are managing especially mobile money systems, also we want to work with the government to ensure that the payments can come down. This is where the problem is. When me I work, some of us work, I've had a chance of working with many countries, when you relate our charges with other countries, our charges are still very high relative with other countries. So we need to bring them down. I think lastly, the agricultural facility, we have talked about it, and we have, the bank does also what we call fixed income operations, we are going to have somebody here to explain that, somebody here will tell you how you can also be rich. Don't invest only in houses, 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 and you are going to find problems of people renting them. We have got products here, bonds, treasury bills, these are government papers, government securities, where you can put your money, they give you interest, like we purchase a bond, five years, three years, five years, ten years, fifteen years, twenty years. And the government uses that money to build roads, do what, do infrastructure and so on. Then we also have money you can give us, which are treasury bills, this for helping us control money supply. Then you can have it for, we can have it for ninety days, one eighty-four, one eighty-two, three sixty, we can have it for just few months within a year. We can tell you the number of days, three months, six months, one year, and then we give you interest. Actually, the interest of these products is much, much higher and good. And except the taxes, the tax, of course, treasury bills with tax, twenty percent, treasury bond, ten percent, on interest, not over the mother, not on the principal. And then you get your money when you are seated, you don't have high blood pressure, because somebody has run away from your unit of where you are renting. So we are here to make you learn all these things. And so we support the government therefore as a central bank through also getting money for financing government products. We are these days working on climate change, and the central bank is working on ESG, environmental social governance, we want to make sure that we do green lending. So commercial banks who are here, please, when you give out loans also, make sure that these commercial banks are giving out what to go, green lending, they are working on projects which also protect our environment and also create harmony in society, what we want to do to ensure that Uganda, we have a country which is stable and the homes are harmonious and there is equity, the person with disabilities also accessing these loans and there's no discrimination and so on. This will be explained as well. So in conclusion therefore, the bank of Uganda as an institution is very happy to be able here to work with you. This is the first time, I think, in many years, you are right, because I was also complaining. I was also complaining. If a commercial bank is there, and also we hear about the central bank, what does exactly the central bank, what do they do? But when I came there, I was very, very happy, that I came there within an environment where the central bank, I was so, so happy, Kenneth. And with our governor, I want to thank our governor very, very much. Our governor is very, very interested in making sure that we take the bank to the people and those of the people can understand what the central bank does. And therefore, the governor is ensuring and all of us to drive this process of bringing the people to the central bank and just the central bank to you, because this is your bank, to ensure that you use the products and you know what the central bank does. If you have any question, you can ask, but together we can work to ensure that Uganda's financial system remains robust, remains functional. Our mantra, which Kenneth here, our director of communications, representing the bank secretary, is, let me repeat it again, what does the central bank stand for so that we all know it? Like for us in Makere University, Makere University, we build for the future. We build for the future, you have been knowing it, I mean, these people told you how we have built them, they are all my products. So we are very, very happy, because we build for the future. Now for us at the central bank now, we want price stability, that's what we are working on, sound financial system in support of social economic transformation. That's what we are doing, like Makere people. So we want therefore you to support us, to ensure we can achieve this. Also, this is why the president knows, that we are working to ensure that there is price stability, sound financial system, banks, the payments, and the president has told us, I want you to listen. The president Museven is saying and government that Uganda's gross domestic product, which is Uganda, which is business, which is what we call gross domestic product, that number currently is about fifty billion dollars, and the president wants that number to be five hundred billion dollars in just in about fifteen years from now, in twenty forty. So the president wants a ten forward growth, which means those who were in mathematics class, it means our current GDP must double every five years. And if we are going to achieve that, then we are going to be like South Africa and also like Nigeria. These are the only two African countries which are near there. And what can you imagine, also being like Nigerian, you move big, being South African, you move big. You saw Gomafosa how he was with Trump the other day. And we are wondering how can Trump treat Gomafosa like that? They were all crying because you know how heavy Gomafosa is in South Africa and the economy he holds. So that's why we want our president to behave as well. Because when you are talking, somebody will listen to you. From when you go to wedding meetings, have you been in wedding meetings, show your faces? Because somebody loves your face. It is the man which talks, it is just the man which talks. Even wedding, don't go there, just send your money, you will see how people will be very happy. Not you, we want you to do what? We just want your contribution. And also in countries, that's how countries are. Our president is fair in a meeting where he is, are we together, depending on you people, how rich you are. That's all. Nobody is going to respect us at all, unless of economic activities we engaged in, the money we are getting in our houses, the taxes we pay to government, government is able to pay our workers very well, and they are also happy, everybody is very happy, and then we say we are Ugandans. Sometimes some of you even feared say you are Ugandan. And that's why the Basungu say, are you from Nigeria? Are you near Lagos? Are you near Nairobi? Why? Because those are the cities they know. Why? Those are the people who have weight. Why? Because they do business, they are known in international business transactions and also in World Trade Organization. So that's why where we want Uganda to be. So we are in support of President's manifesto, to ensure we have ten forward growth. And also this is for the central bank people to know, that as a central bank, we are going to work with the government, also with you, to ensure that we realize the ten forward growth by doing economic activity and also doing very good job to ensure that prices are stable, the financial system is working, and then all of us are moving together. Thank you so much for listening. Mwabare, mwabare, mounonga banyabusheni. Twitter.
Obukalo for the deputy governor. Professor, thank you very, very much for your comments. You see, the Bible somewhere in Hosea says that my people perish for lack of knowledge. And then it also says somewhere that one word to the wise should be enough. The man has come and has taught, if you didn't get anything, at least you know how not to fold money. Yeah? That's why it's easy to work with a teacher. Deputy Governor, thank you very, very, very much. I have an announcement, some of you might have come with mutilated, as he said, the central bank English is mutilated, but for us, we can say damaged notes, the ones that you have damaged, okay? So if you have those notes, you can go out to the tent, we have someone, we'll exchange them, as long as they are not forged notes, okay? So you can go out, if you don't have any here and your friends have, you can call them and they come and make use of that service. As he said, the banks are here, supervised financial institutions, payment systems, MTN, I can see they are here. If you have any questions or complaints, they will be addressed. Now, I will quickly move to the next item on the agenda. We promised to try and release you at one PM, at least for lunch, so that you can also sit and enjoy your lunch with the district leaders, with each other and with the deputy governor. So we'll be as fast as we can, we have two presentations only. And governor talked about the agriculture credit facility and small business recovery fund. I want to invite Justine to talk about, and Justine, because the governor told much more, you will use only five minutes. Then the rest we shall hear from the members. Thereafter, we shall have Mr. Moses Kuesiga from representing the director of financial markets, telling us how to invest in treasury bills, treasury bonds, what we call government securities, also five minutes. So Justine.
Thank you so much, Victor. Protocol observed. Amazina Ganje, Baranita, Justine Komja, Dakota, the department, agriculture credit facility, Bank of Uganda. Banpereze dachiki tano zog. Goktubire tuagambire nimu abazio. Nijakubagambira asente zaba hingi, abarisa, nabokshubura ebiyomire. Nijakubagambira ahasente ezabantawa tiru covid nineteen. Echokubanza chabiona, ezisenteza agriculture, bakazheza Bank of Uganda, omunkumibiri namuenda. Omo statistics zetu western region, neyakasha tumu kfunesizente, ezisente tuagabire almost obukiku obuhumbi one trillion. Banyaruganda banyabusheni, model farmers, nabe shenjeriza. Kfunesizente, tukurakurane ebitu bitu. Echarabiri, nivohha abokubasa kfunesizente, omuntu owaburishu. Omuntu omuhingi, omurisa, naromushubuzi, warikubasa kfunesizente. Kandi nozifuna orukurabirankahi. Wabo inakapap, omufayro yanyu harimobopapurabu ingi, harimakapapura aka SCF, agriculture credit facility. Enyimayako harihosa banka zona ezibank of Uganda reberira. Nabe shenjeriza. Wazo mulyejo banka okavadi rotini jakuachira ezisente ezabahingi ezabarisa. Buribanka eriyaha kapapurako ezine. Hata chinkwenda kubagambira hokachi, norrebezi banka nazo zine lonezabo ezibara heres. Azaro nezabo nizichira kuanguha kufuna, kuchira loni itu. So novasakuza yaba kuteka haruchiri oruwarone yabo. Konka wabo riomogumisiriza. Lonie itu, nivijaba kureba musirigu awe, bariba businessiyawe, batwala bakfunebi handikobi awe, mzo mubanka, mufasinenga ebi papurabi yomo bank of Uganda ezisente zija. Aha wenchii, ntukheresezizente, echokubanza chabiona amagoba gazo ni machemunong. Agriculture Credit Facility Fund, tura heresa, no teka mama goba, ga ikumi nibiri pa senti. Omumaka, you can imagine, ezonisente. Harihoo ezisente ezebiyomire. Orabuzomaani, orabusebi himbo, orabuzaa obushaza, ezosente ezebiyomire, ntuzukhereza ahamagoba ikumi nabutano aharigana. Kandi ezosente, ntubasaku hereza, mbaka ahabukiku, ikumi ten billion Ugandan shillings. Then ezabahingi, ntukhereza ahabukiku ru buvili, two point one billion shillings. Ezabahingi novasaku kuma ozine, orazikozesa, orukushashura amagoba gonka kumara emiyaka munaana. Moyninaga banyabusheni, nisakuangho kujia banperezova dachika vichemunong. Theni, orabasa kuzifunota burironi yona eine obukua kurizo waayo. Harihoo abantwabi ituaba aburishu, abatine chapa, abatine ebitu bitu, omusingo, kubarabasa kusinga kfunesizente. Wabo rendesente zii kisya aharimilyoni makumi yavi. Muryakuwa tanka grupo, mzo mubanka yanyu, nari muaba mune sako, ejo sako, eina herabika omubanka ezesha eziriyaka papriaho. Mudiende, mzo mubanka ejo, mubajirengutwine, ntwenda milyoni makumi yaviri, turiyava antava nava, nibarija kureba, morahingachi, barija kureba, abantavinesza bank statementi, barija kureba, omukagogo awe, nana echarochao. Then nivijakozesebiyovitu, kubahereza ezosente, mutino musingo mohango, kisya aharimilyoni makumi yaviri. Wabo riyahayi guru yamilyoni makumi yaviri garuzahi guru, ahonobari yakueta ga maybe land title, okaditwara, okadisinga yomo bank. Echarkanti, ezisente, hatina zako gamba ezisente zako vidhi. Ezisente zako vidhi, bakazute hereza omubank of Uganda inkumibiri abiri nagumwe. No hamuntu, harikubasa kfunesizente. Oine businessi, omuntu owaburishu. Oine company, nokozesa van tukutani chirava antu babiri, kugaruzahi guru. Korabe wabiro ine businessi, oinebi handikobiayo, entasia yazo eka berieta. Oine kuboi inebi handikobiayo, okuwa e no taasia nakovidi kuyajiremu ha hakavahochi. So ebiyomira wabiteka yomo banka, banyabaramu. Ezosente zirio, atajira banka ya kubusabusa ngu, tizirio, ezosente zirio, justo inokugumichira zamkache, konka zirio, bazuku hereza. Hazezosente zako vidizo, napasente diyayoni inchemunong, ni obutundi ikumi aharigana omumaka. Obutundi aharikumi aharigana omumaka. Kandi novasaku zikozesa kumara emiyake na ezosente. Haza, omryezi sentezune zinagamba, ezabahingi naba risa, abarashuburebiyomire, ababusinesses. Zine chabujeni, chabujeni omurujungune iturareta grace period. Moynine, harihochabujeni, kuri jirira, ebiyora hinga, ebiyora risa, narebiyora shubur. Abantu abarashubura ebiyomire, uaguro rateka muduka yawe, abututura bahereza chabujini. Abo wafunesente, orazahariogure, oteko mubusinessiyao. Konka harihogo inino muni, ninama jan, ndukuzakwinka, ntajereze gakorechi, gakuri. Ahotu, tura khereza chabujeni, kurgaa ahamiezimokaaga, mbaka ha amiyake isatu. Otara shashura amagoba gon, kuri jirira echora kor, nuhotura variromu. Theni, etinda etinda vasaku gamba ho, ahariazizente, harihoo wazi funa, oino kuzikozesa chi, nyabaramu himava banyabusheni, otafunesizente, okazaguritaka. Otafunesizente, okazakwinka meti, atinoreba waguritaka, tiralukretera senti. Ezisente turashereza omuntu oinehuetiintu. Manche nga, ntwenda tukonjere omutindo wow, add commercialization into what you're doing, twinata onjere omumutindo ebiyohingi, let's say. Twenda tukonjere omumutindo ebionhingi, let's say, okure, inke sto ha, oyonjera hastoha zawe. Ofune ebionmebi kubika mebi ntubikoma. Wabo ine ente ogureza machines kubasa kukama. Wabo ine misiri abama jani, gula fertilizers, na pesticide ebibinto, biya fertilizer zinari ebikonjera omumusiriguany. Mancheenga. Victor Yandewa. Ebindi ninjantujakubanta bijonjera humpora ampora, ntuzakubata riomuryejo tenti, kampereze mujenzu waanjaka dishao. Maybari munonga, ntutu.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Yeah, Moses Kuesiga is my name, and I'm going to use five minutes. Now, I'm very lucky. Governor has already spoken to my subject. Secondly, there are these leaflets, the brochures that you would find in your park. One is labeled treasury bills, another one is labeled treasury bonds. Please take good use of those leaflets. So I'm going to summarize and give you the most recent facts, which are very, very exciting. Quickly, we are talking about you opening an investment account at Bank of Uganda. You as an individual, you as mister and misses, you as a church, you as a school, you as a family, you as anybody, you as someone opening an account for your children. You can open an investment account at Bank of Uganda. That's the subject included in those brochures headed treasury bills and treasury bonds. So when you open an investment account at Bank of Uganda, and you say, how do you do that? Can I come to Bank of Uganda to do that? Bank of Uganda is very far. Do I need to board a bus, a taxi, and come to Bank of Uganda Kampala? Or move to Mbarara? You don't need to do that. It is very simple. Locate your commercial bank branch nearest to you. Postbank, Finance Trust Bank, Housing Finance Bank, Stambic Bank, DFCU Bank. Go to that bank, tell them I want to open an account with Bank of Uganda. I'm told it is an investment account, which I can open in Bank of Uganda. Good news, they will only ask for two things from you. A national ID and a passport photograph. That is all. They won't ask for a single shilling from you. They won't ask for money from you. It's just those two simple things, national ID and a photograph of yourself. And you will be ready to open an investment account at Bank of Uganda. Now that you have opened an account at Bank of Uganda, what next? The name sounds clear. Investment, you put some money on that account. How much money? The minimum is a hundred thousand Ugandan shillings. For how long? You can say, I do it for a short term. Three months, six months, twelve months. The people in the markets, they have a jargon. They say you have invested in a treasury bill. When you have put your funds for such a short period of time, six months, all the way to twelve months. They say you have invested in treasury bill. Should you say, I want to go longer? You can do two years, three years, five years, ten years, fifteen years, twenty years. The people in the markets, they say you have invested in a treasury bond. Why treasury? Because the treasury, national treasury, the Minister of Finance, who represents the government, is responsible for paying you back that money together with interest for keeping your money for the period that you have invested. What interest are we talking about? If you invest for three months, currently, you'd earn twelve percent per year. If you did it for six months, you have about twelve point seven percent per year. If you did it for a year, you have about fifteen percent per year. That's the interest income you're earning. If you did it for two years, about sixteen percent. Ten years, about seventeen point five percent interest income for a year. If you do the mathematics, you'll be happy and you'll be wondering, why didn't I know long time ago? Twenty years, you're talking about eighteen percent per year. Interest income of eighteen percent per year for twenty years. Can we do the mathematics and see how that looks like? One million invested for twenty years at eighteen percent per year. Every year that one million is giving you a hundred and eighty thousand for twenty years. Do the math. Does it make sense? Does it not make sense? Remember, you are going to be earning this twenty, this interest income. When you are sleeping, with your very good dreams, no worry. You are sure the money is going to come back. Why? These are the safest investments you can make. There is no safer investment in the Republic of Uganda. Two, they are as liquid as cash. When you need your cash back, before the expiration of that investment period, just reach your bank, postbank, Stambic, DFC, and say, hello, I need some of my money back. Or all of it, I need it back. They will immediately execute that instruction and give you the funds on the same day. So the investments we're discussing are very liquid investments. They are close to cash, yet they are giving us that very good interest income that wouldn't earn in any other investment in a safe manner like this. Again, I have only five minutes, and I'm checking my clock. I have already exhausted my minutes. Currently, we are available. Reach out to us, we're going to be at the tent for any clarity. Information is in the brochures. We are happy to take this forward. Steps, please visit your commercial bank and take an immediate step to utilize the information that we have received this week. Thank you very much for your attention. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Moses. Again, you've made it very easy for you. You have taught. Justin, thank you very much for having taught as well. Ladies and gentlemen, it's now your time. The district leadership has spoken. The bank has spoken. We have commercial banks here. Their managers actually are the ones here. We have our branch manager, Western Barra, here. MTN is here, and I think more cash is here. All the other payment systems where you use your phones or computers, they are here. Yeah? Please, it is now your time to give us your feedback. If you have any questions, any comments, please send them. I have colleagues here. Kennedy, there's a microphone right here. Kevin, please get a microphone, and Maxim, they'll be moving around. Now, we shall, I will guide, that we kindly have five questions at a time. They will come to the deputy governor, and he will distribute them, if he wishes, to the team that he mentioned earlier here, okay? In case you are shy like me, you might write your question. Your program has a blank bottom. You could write your question there and give it to anyone in a white t-shirt, and then they'll take it to the deputy governor as well, and he may distribute, or he might even answer. We wanted to release you at one. We have a full hour for you. Please use it, engage us. We might start, how do we start? Should we start from, okay, there's a hand that is up. Let's go. So let's have the first five. We have a hand there, one, two, three reverend, four, okay, six. I'll abuse my regulation, though I'm a regulator. We'll have six, two here and four there. Kevin, please. Kindly, before, I will encourage so that as many people as possible can ask, yeah? Please just give us your name and the question. The story around your question can be given in the tent. Yeah, over lunch, let's just ask the question and rather than tell the story about our question. Kindly, kindly. Thank you.
Thank you so much. My name is Simon Sezmoijuka. And I'm from Mbarara, I'm the chapman of Mbarara City Traders Association. My question is, we can see you coming as Bank of Uganda to do securitization workshops once in a year. You were in Mbarara last year. You are here, and that means you are doing it regionally. And I was, I have a concern that why don't you incorporate your securitization workshops with other agencies, like URA, URA SB, and UNBS? They come to the business community regularly for you come once. And most of, most of the concerns that are in the business community concerning bank, banks and Bank of Uganda, they are only addressed once in a year, and they are hurting, they are burning. And I am very passionate that I don't see Umrahia, the regulators of moneyrenders and the MDIs. Most of the burning issues are relating on those, on those companies. The moneyrenders are exploiting the business community. The moneyrenders are taking people's properties. Most of the questions, in fact, they are not with the banks. They are with, they call them what, microfinance institutions? The moneyrenders and of those types. So the Bank of Uganda, I am requesting that you incorporate your trainings with those agencies, because URA, like in this financial year, they have engaged in Mbarara City fifteen times. But now in Mbarara, it's good, you have given us an opportunity, we are going to engage, but it is at a rokorevo. That is my concern. I think you should look into it and see how you can regularly engage the business community, because we actually have a lot. Finally, I am looking at the Small Business Recovery Fund. Now, the Small Business Recovery Fund has been here for the last four years. But when you ask on, on a random basis, how many people have ever gotten the Small Business Recovery Fund here? And I was saying that maybe you changed the name. Winrezina, it's just Small Business Recovery. Business is that business, not fastka fakari. Hatumjeti Small Business Support Fund, because the recovering is no longer for those ones which died long ago. So that at least, have a concept, tinsia, abantwaja adaptingi omujerendiz. Echichincha Small Business Recovery Fund, inkati startinga, when they were on, kid, odunchingit, atrogogo. Konkamasmoku korakuanjiri. Mhinre mowundamantwakajira, apeta itewu kizakujachi, kurondakasinta. Maybari munong.
Thank you. Before that, next, Maxim, I just needed to note that your question can be on insurance. We have the representative manager, Western Uganda. He sits in Barra, Insurance Regulatory Authority. Mr. Boni, where are you? Yeah, he's there, he can take those questions as well. We also have the Capital Markets Authority in the house. Capital Markets Authority, I think they are out, oh, okay, over there, he's over there. Your questions can also be about that. Next question.
Thank you very much. Chris Mugasha. I'm a farmer, I'm a journalist, and I sit on Busheni Municipal, Municipal Forum. My concern is one, and I want, my question goes to the governor. Because he talked about the issue of engaging in activities which can help our country to earn, to earn in dollars. And my, my question is like this. At what stage do you advise government where it should put money? Because, like the coffee industry, we have seen billions of money being allocated to an individual. The coffee farmers have spent years without getting any, any, any support from the government. When you look at the tea industry, the tea industry like here in Usheni, it has totally collapsed. Because farmers are not supported with fertilizer, they are not given any, any support. I don't know which road you used from Mbarara to Ishaka. Even tourists, to here, to Usheni, the tourists have now diverted. They no longer use this road, they prefer to use other routes. So, and recently, we saw government, I don't know which department, but we were told how MPs received millions of money. Millions of money, and if this money was like put on this road, if this money was given to the tea farmers, if this money was given to the coffee farmers, I mean, our foreign exchange earnings would really go high. So at what stage do you advise government that you put money in this area? Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have one for the reverend. And then after the reverend, in a blue suit here, then we'll come to these two.
Thank you so much. My name is Reverend Joseph Mueyunge. I'm a farmer at home and a priest. Have two concerns. Concern number one, it is about the counterfeit currency. Counterfeit currency. We are becoming victims of that. You get money from someone after your sales. You take the money to the bank, it is punched, and you face the loss. What measures do you have to protect us as Bank of Uganda? Secondly, it's a concern about mobile money hackers. Those who invade our, our mobile money accounts and take the money, and you report case to the police or to other authorities. You call to the mobile money operators, they don't support you. What measures do you have to safeguard us as your people? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Reverend. Maxim, let's move to the frontier. Name and question, let's be as brief as the reverend was.
Thank you. My name is Enomnushn Levy. I'm going to talk about mobile money and its earnings. It earns a lot, and actually, I'm going to use like MTN. It makes like fifty million dollars in profit. And you said I'm going to be brief, I'm going to read it as I. Given that MTN mobile money is key, part of Uganda financial system, and the company majority foreign-owned, fifty million dollars is, it's earned in profit. How is Bank of Uganda ensuring that? The long-term strategy, control, and data sovereignty and financial stability of Uganda are not compromised. Because we know seventy-five percent, seventy-six percent of our shares is owned by foreigners. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are moving here, we had two hands here, we'll come to you in a second.
Serestin Twenomicha is my name. I'm the headmaster, Saint Kagwa Dayan boarding primary school, chairman of the teacher association, Usheni Shaka Municipal Council, head of Raitis Saint Kagwa Parish. My question is, sir, Mr. Governor, you talked about forging the money and reading it be mutated. Last year, I was in India, when I changed my money, I had forged it next thing that I would keep it in my double small pocket here. So when I came back, I tried to have the dollars exchanged into our own currencies, they failed. So can that money be helped, I mean, can it be changed outside, including the rupees, Indian currency? That's question number one. Two, you said you are a teacher, and Jesus was also a teacher. Matthew chapter twenty-eight, verse twenty, I mean, verse eighteen to twenty. You also talked about stabilization of prices for us, we are teachers, we only get salaries. I am sending and requesting it convince the Ministry of Finance, Planning and Economic Development, local government, and Ministry of Education and Sports, at least to enhance teachers' salaries. That is stabilization of the prices of teachers. Finally, I have been invited here as head teacher, Saint Kagwa boarding primary school. We are constructing a very big building. And wherever Jesus would go, he would give spiritual salvation to the people there. And you are here, bank, Governor Bank of Uganda, you control the economy of Uganda, and I expect to get financial salvation from you. Now, abanikwisa, otwere chairman, Peter is here, the management, twere Saint Kagwa boarding primary school, to mbekichisimbeto.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. May God bless you.
Thank you, thank you very much. There was one last question there. That's the last. We get responses, and we shall get to the gentleman there.
Okay, thank you. I'm Tukeska Jackson, and I work with Usheni Ishaka Municipal Council here. My concern was on the interest rate. I was, I came today to understand that one of the rules of Bank of Uganda is to control other commercial banks. Why is it that different?
The strongest reserves, they have the largest reserves for oil. So everybody would want to therefore buy that oil from there. A currency, when you want to buy a currency of another country, it's just like the same commodity we told you. Just like the same shirt which you want to buy, the same cup of, the same flask you want to buy shoes, it's the same. What is the weakest currency in the world? Is the money of Iran. Who wants to go to Iran and sleep in hotel in Iran? Where you know President Trump can even bomb it anytime in just a minute. Who want to keep your money in the pocket? And it is Iranian money. And you want to keep it, you are going to use it where? Which airplane goes to Iran, put up your hand. And you're going to pass in which road? That you're going to take to go to Iran. Now, which airplane goes to UK? You all know those planes, with European Airlines, Kenya Airways. Uganda Airlines started going to UK four days ago. Because we are the only ones missing almost, who don't go, because everybody wants to go to UK. As a result of their currency, I'm telling you. Would be on a very high demand and it's not a joke now to get your currency. If you want your money to be demanded and it has a high value. I've already told you the simple message and the medicine, engage in economic activity. Make your hotels very good. Everybody will want to make your tourism and want to congratulate you, Besheny. Make your area for everybody to come. The reason why I said when I was coming, the way I felt, I was not looking at the road. No, I was just looking at your homes, the way how your homes, that's what I said, my dear. I was looking at how your homes are, your homes, then the farm, then the banana plantation. I didn't even mind about the road that tour. I was telling you to the same homes. This was the same level of homes. And how good they are, how somebody has done his farm, how he has done his banana plantation, we were saying wow. Now, if the minister works, works on your road next week, are you going to change your statement? So for me, that's what I meant, that actually the way you have organized your homes, you people, we really admire you. The way you have organized your farms, the way you have organized, what you are lacking is now the market. To ensure especially the value addition, to add on your milk processing, coffee processing. Coffee, I've already earned 1.2 billion dollars. But the coffee value chain, global coffee value chain, is 126 billion dollars. So we earned, the other year we earned 893 million dollars. That's financial, this year we have done very well. We have earned 1.127 billion dollars. But that is still less than 1% of the entire global value chain. Meaning in the English language, the total money earned by anybody working in the area of coffee. Whether you are plant planting, whether you are, whether you are processing and so on. Total value, 130, it was 130 billion dollars, 126. But we earned less than 1%. Why? Because we are not able to process, we are not able to do these things. So I agree with you that we need to do that, make our country also marketable. How I wish everybody was making our country marketable, making our universities marketable. Making Macri, it becomes the best university also, like Harvard. You will find when Macri is like Harvard, every Uganda shilling now, the one which is 3,640 is now. The prices is very, very high to get our shilling also increases. Why? Because many people want, as I already told you, because many people want your currency. So it's value increases. So those are the things that determine the currency, ladies and gentlemen. And what you want to do is to ensure that also you are, many people and visitors want your money. We have a question on money lenders, Martin, this Martin, I think, isn't it? You can also answer it, yes?
Thank you very much, Governor. Yes, indeed, when we hold town hall meetings, we coordinate with the other regulators. Here we have the Insurance Regulatory Authority and the representatives there. We suppose, we also have Capital Markets Authority. We usually move with the Uganda Microfinance Regulatory Authority, because that is the authority that oversees the operations of money lenders. But yesterday when we went meeting here, I made a plea to the financial institutions. The way money lenders work, they, you'll find them on the roads advertising their services. My challenge to the other financial institutions that are regulated and supervised by Bank of Uganda is, why don't you compete with these money lenders? For the customer, because the demand for services is there. Why do you wait for them to come to your banking halls? They fear your banking halls. That is a fact of life. In my first assignment, I worked in a bank. It was a cooperative bank, it has long gone. And there was a customer who had a challenge with one of the staff. And he came and told the staff, I'm going to report you to your manager. He told him, it's okay, go to the manager's seat there, you go and talk to him. He said, okay, he stepped out. He went back home and put on a suit to go and meet the manager. That is the perception people have of you bankers. It is a fact of life. Get out of your comfortable seats and look for customers. All these people who are going to money lenders, it's because they think they can't get services from you, yet you have the money. Governor, my challenge, I push it to the financial institutions. Let them market their services. Hold town halls like these ones. You don't have to wait for Bank of Uganda. Hold these town halls, you can work as partners. You explain what you do, how you do it, why you do it, and why people should come and bank with you. Governor, let me also use the opportunity to talk about the issue of interest rates. There's a gentleman who asked why banks charge different interest rates. And when I say banks, let me not restrict myself to commercial banks only. I'm also talking, I'm addressing credit institutions and microfinance depositing institutions. Those are the institutions Bank of Uganda supervises. And of late, we've also started licensing circles, the big circles. In this region, we have ABOK Circle. It is licensed and regulated by Bank of Uganda. I would encourage each one of you to only use institutions that are licensed and supervised by Bank of Uganda. Because we receive reports from them every week, every month, every quarter, every six months, every year. And we send out teams to evaluate and assess how they are performing. Just in case you have an issue with them, you can easily come back to the central bank and complain. And we hope you resolve the complaint you have with them. Run away from institutions that are not licensed and supervised by Bank of Uganda. That's why we have challenges, complaints coming in regarding money lenders. Right now, you don't have anyone to respond to those complaints. Yet if you're dealing with Stanby or Centenary or Postbank or Finance Trust or Centenary, Bank of Uganda will be able to come in and understand and explain why they treat you the way they do. Now, there were, there are many ways to determine interest rates. You as a person, look at interest rates in two ways. When you have money and you want to save it in a bank, how do you determine the bank you go to? Go to the bank that gives you the highest interest rate. How will you determine that? Do window shopping, move from institution to institution. When you enter the banking hall, if you've been very observant, they display the charges. Look at the charges. If one institution is offering 5%, and another is giving you 7%, why should you go for an institution that gives you 5% and can get 7%? The same applies when they are lending to you. Do window shopping. If an institution can charge me 13, there is no reason why I should go to an institution that is going to charge me 17. You understand? You have the power. The second thing I want to encourage you to do is to use the Credit Reference Bureau services. What the Credit Reference Bureau, bureaus do is when you borrow money, your history of payment is captured in that Credit Reference Bureau. Now, when you're paying well, all these institutions will be looking for you. They want to learn to you because your record is captured on the Credit Reference Bureau. Use that report to negotiate better rates. If you go to Bank A and they say we will charge you 17%, you tell them, I have a good history, I've been paying. I have a business that is thriving. My business generates income and I'll be able to pay back your loan. Why don't you charge me a lower rate? If they don't accept lower the rate, move to the next institution. That is the only way you'll have better rates you as an individual. The central bank cannot come and direct institutions to reduce interest rates. Why? The governor has already explained, government liberalized. He talked in the perspective of exchange rates, Forex bureaus. You can find dollars wherever because of that police of liberalization. The same applies to acquiring loans. Me personally, I don't have loyalty to any institution. If I go to Bank A and they are giving me better interest rates, that's the institution I'll deal with. If you're charging me higher rate, I'll vote with my feet and go to another institution. Because there are so many institutions that are offering that service of lending. Thank you.
Because this was us also asking why the bank, meaning the Bank of Uganda, does not control the lending rates for mobile money lenders. I think you explained it. That's the same question. Then this person is asking a very interesting question, very interesting, that banks in Ishaka. This must be a much bigger thing. He doesn't want to hide anything. Banks in Ishaka, if you are here and you are in the bank in Ishaka, refuse the dollars. Simply because notes are old, I thought you, why are you making our notes old? Folded. They are refusing because they are folded and old, yet the one is in Mbarara. And our manager should be a proud that I think here, the one in Mbarara accepts. So the one in Mbarara accepts the other old notes, is that correct first of all? Why do the one in Ishaka refuses? Let's get the, I think, let's get it directed from you, the answer.
Thank you very much, Deputy Governor. Allow me clarify that as a central bank and the Mbarara branch, we do not accept the US dollars. But we can always advise you to usually go to some Forex bureaus that can accept those dollars. However, what we do, we accept old currencies. And we always encourage commercial banks to accept this old money, put it in their deposits, and then bring it to us.
Thank you very much. We have a question here on the Small Business Recovery Fund or Small Business Support Fund? What are we having? Roger is here, and also Walede is here, you can seek support.
Thank you very much, Governor. I think the underlying sentiments between of wanting to change the Small Business Recovery Fund to Small Business Support Fund is very well taken. Currently, we are suggesting amendments with our stakeholders. We have a memorandum of understanding. And it has been like four years, like you said, almost, after Covid. So we do recognize that businesses now need to be supported. We are actually also making amendments so that the businesses that probably even resulted from those that were suffering during Covid times, new businesses are supported. So well noted, as we go in to negotiations with the stakeholders, it will be considered tabled. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a question here on counterfeit. What did we do with this counterfeit? Counterfeits, we have currency here.
Thank you very much, Governor. I want to say that counterfeiting of currency is not only unique to Uganda or to the Ugandan shilling, all currencies are being counterfeited in the world. And it's not only unique to currency, but people counterfeit any product. That's why you will go to the market and you'll find there is original oil and there's a counterfeit oil, there's original soap and there's a counterfeit soap. So I just wanted us to say to note that the bank's mandate is to provide secure currency. Secure in the sense that it should be easy to be identified by the public. But it should also be difficult to be counterfeited. So by the counterfeiters will not sleep, they will always do their work. Our first line of defense in counterfeiting is knowing our currency. I don't know how many of us can be able to tell a counterfeit if you receive it. By show of hands, if you receive the Bank of Uganda note, are you able to tell that this note is a counterfeit or not? This is so disturbing, but yes. So Bank of Uganda always carries public awareness campaigns on teaching people about their currency. So allow me just do a small illustration here. I'm going to request each one of you to pull any note that you have in your pocket. Whether it's 1,000 up to 50,000, please pull it out and let's just illustrate how you can check for a counterfeit from a genuine note. Are we there? Do we have our notes? So the first thing that you receive, when you see, when you get a note, how you check for a counterfeit? There is what we call a watermark. A watermark is placed in that clear area where there is nothing, yeah? So raise it up in the light. I don't know if you can, if the light in the room can check. If you raise it up, you'll see a head of a crested crane, yes? Are you able to see the head of a crested crane? Maybe the light is not enough in the room, but even if you used your phone torch and you touched it from under, you will see the head of a crested crane. Below that head of the crested crane, there is a denomination amount. If it's a 50,000, it will be 50,000. If it's 20,000, it will be 20. Yes? Another thing, the counterfeiters have tried to do that. If you look at a counterfeit, you'll almost see that. But the unique thing about the crested crane here is that when you look at closely to the, near the mouth of the crested crane, there is a white patch, small white patch. Once you, if you look at a counterfeit, you will never see that white patch, whether you want it or not. That is something they have failed to copy. They have copied the photo of the crested crane, they have tried to put the denomination, but you will not see the counterfeit, I mean that white patch. So once you see that, you should be able to tell that this is not a counterfeit. Whether the note is new or old, that patch is always there. So that is how you should be, the first thing you should do. Yesterday, I was telling people here that when they receive notes, they only look at the color. They just know this is 50, this is 20, this is 5, because of the color, but they don't pay attention. Have you been able to see that? Another thing that you can tell is when you change this note, when you try to twist it, there is a patch which changes color. When you try to move it far from you, it changes color. There's a color changing image, okay? Then the other thing is, if you touch the part of written Bank of Uganda or the denomination part, when you touch it's rough, it's a raised ink, that is a genuine note. But the counterfeiters, if you try to touch that part written Bank of Uganda or even the denomination part, you will not feel that it's rough. So that you should be able to tell that this is not a genuine note. So our first line should really be us knowing our note. That's when you will only be able to tell that this is a counterfeit and this is a genuine note. I hope we are clear. I'm also going to request that as you go out, we have posters out there that you can take. The other thing, if you are in business, you can try to invest in a UV light machine. The UV light machine, when you use it, there are features you can't see in open light. But when you put it in that machine, the serial number, the vertical serial number changes color. Right now, it's black, but if you put it in a UV light, it changes into orange. You should be able to see some orange. But if you put a counterfeit in a UV light, it's plain black. So you should be able to tell that this is a counterfeit and this is genuine. Please, as you're walking out, pass through the table, we have posters that give all the features of the genuine currency note. And once you have that, you'll be able to tell the counterfeit. Whenever you're given a counterfeit, you're able to reject it. And always pay attention, when you get your money, please check before you leave either a counter or a shop or a mobile money person, because you will go there to get money and they will give you money and just walk home. By the time you go and buy something, they tell you you have a counterfeit. And then you try to trace back where did I get it from and you can't remember. But if you check your money from there, you're able to give back the person and say, no, I'm not safe with this note, I don't think it's clear. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, we are finishing, we have just a few questions here, like two, three. We have mobile money hackers. Mobile money hackers, Alex, 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 mobile money hackers, what are we going to do?
Again, thank you very much, Deputy Governor, and thank you for asking that question. When we reflect back about five, six years ago, there were quite a number of hackers. And what we realized as a central bank, these hacking are more of what we call social engineering, where somebody calls you, tricks you into revealing your information, or promises you that you've entered a draw and you've won, and some people are falling prey of that. Imagine being called that you've won 5 million shillings. You've not entered into any draw. But before you, even knowing that you've not entered into any draw, they will tell you first, pay us some money. That is one of the social engineering. But there are also others who are seeing, coming in the form of somebody initiating a withdraw. Or asking you to give, enter some codes because they are calling you either from UCC or from MTN or from some other mobile money service providers. We noticed the problem normally comes from the side of the consumers, and that speaks to awareness. So as Bank of Uganda and other regulators, we took on a campaign, you will recall the Better Steady campaign as one of them, and the Tom Ferras, one of the campaigns that we went on fully to create awareness. And we saw a massive reduction in fraud, because people became aware. To the extent that when the fraudsters call you and they realize that you are aware, they abuse you. And it's not that the regulators are safe, we also get the calls as regulators. But because we are aware, you tell them, in fact, in the last, recently, they even called the ED of UCC. And the gentleman calling was saying, he is the ED. But imagine calling the Deputy Governor and saying, I'm the Deputy Governor of Bank of Uganda. So UCC had to track that person because they had called the wrong person. So as Bank of Uganda, we work close with other sister regulators, including UCC, to make sure that one, on the side of the players, we make sure that their systems are robust. But also on the side of consumers, we create awareness to reduce the fraud. Because normally, you are more vulnerable as a consumer than the providers that are trying to improve their systems. So we've done that over time. Again, we have created what we call the Financial Sector Anti-Fraud Consortium. It's a joint initiative of Bank of Uganda, other regulators, including UCC, the police, security agencies to fight fraud in the sector. What are we doing as a consortium? Oh, people have come together, one, to share information. So what we are doing right now, we have a portal where if we hear of any fraudster, we share that information on that portal, so that we know. To the extent that if you're a fraudster, your number could be blacklisted as one initiative. Two is to create awareness. And just to mention that on a quarterly basis, some gentleman said we come once in a while. On a quarterly basis, we go around the country and radio stations to talk about fraud in the financial sector and how consumers can protect themselves. As one of the things that we are doing. But also, we are doing what we call capacity building. As we are trying to protect consumers, the fraudsters are also in class learning. So they keep changing their tactics. They wake up in the morning to go to their office, and their office is learning how to defraud others. Okay? Some of these are university graduates, by the way. Yeah? Working with others. Today, let us use this trick. Send messages to like 500 people, random numbers, okay? In one of them, their people will yield. Imagine where they send you that I am expecting the money, please send it to this number. Sometimes we send money to people and we don't realize we are sending it to the right people. So they're also learning, they keep trying those tricks and sometimes they get the money. So that is what Bank of Uganda is doing. And we hope that as a consumer, you keep helping us. And also, reporting is very important. Sometimes we are defrauded and we don't report. UCC has worked very closely with the security agencies to take these guys to court and some are in jail. Thank you, Deputy Governor, I think I can stop here.
Yes, can, we also had, MTN is here, I think. MTN can add on exactly what they are doing.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Governor, for the opportunity. Ladies and gentlemen, good morning. Yeah, it's good afternoon. Andrew Tushovida, the Regional Business Manager for Western Region on behalf of MTN Uganda. On the side of MTN, just add on what has been said. First and foremost is the guarantee around your PIN. Your PIN is key. No one will take your money if your PIN is safe. No one in this room will say that I woke up in the morning, I had 10,000, I had 1 million, and my money disappeared. That speaks to the system. The governor was talking about, that we enhance our systems to guarantee the safety of your money. It's about you as a customer to support the hackers to access your account. They will share with you codes and you support them to press those codes. Once you support them, definitely they'll access your money. But from the system perspective, I can guarantee and assure you that on that basis, that's what we do to ensure that no one loses money off the system by these hackers. Then the other is the trainings, the sessions from our agents who support us to reach the final consumer. We have data trainings where we have field teams to go on sharing best practices with these agents so that they can communicate to our customers to be aware that we have fraudsters. And these fraudsters, they are not people from Kabale, they are not people from Besheny, they are not people from outside Uganda. These are our sisters, our brothers, our mothers, our uncles, we live with them. So we just need to be very aware and keen that whenever you're with someone, don't show him or her your PIN. It's very important that you keep your PIN secret. And the other important thing I would like to share is on, most of our mothers, our adult people, who give kids papers to go to the agents. You write your number and PIN and you give to an agent, then they withdraw. Some of you, you have left your PIN with a mobile money agent. You just send there the phone. That's a risk. So I request that don't leave your PIN number, those five digits, with those agents. Don't trust them. This is your money, it's your bank account. Please, let's not leave PINs with our village agents. Because either they are relatives, we trust them, but with money, let's not trust them. The day he will need your money, sometimes they can withdraw more than what you're telling them to withdraw. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. MTN, I think the last one is we had stabilization of salaries. This is going to be Dr. Kenneth. And CSR, there is a gentleman here who wants money from, we have Dr. Kenneth, he's going to explain that. Then we have interest rates, Huntington, I think Huntington answered that. So the last question here is from Dr. Kenneth.
As advisor to Governor, we participate in budget discussions. We provide our views, but we provide them on an advisory basis. So government does not have an obligation to take our advice. But because we have a good working relationship with government, they check on board our advice. Now, on your specific issue of salaries, that's really outside our mandate. We advise government on things like borrowing, on things like macroeconomic stability, but we would not advise government to increase, for instance, salaries, because that's outside our mandate. I think you know how government operates. Every institution has its mandate and restricts their operations with that mandate. So unfortunately, I can't give you the answer you are probably wanting to hear. Now, on CSR. Now on CSR, we have our corporate social responsibility strategy, where we support certain projects that align with our strategy, but we also give donations to those activities or those projects that we feel are deserving. However, there is a process. The process requires that you write to the Governor or the Deputy Governor, a formal letter expressing your request. The request must be by a formal institution, we don't donate to individuals, because our donations are aimed at helping communities. So you write, you provide what you're going to use the money for, the account where this money is going to go, who are the people behind, how many people are going to benefit, then there is a committee that reviews those donations, and if your donation passes the requirements, then you will succeed. So my advice to you would be, please write a formal letter, yes, we have listened, but please write a formal letter to formalize it, to the Governor or the Deputy Governor, include all of those details, and then the bank will get back to you on whether you've been successful, whether the project fulfills the requirements that the bank has as an institution, and then you will be given the donation. Or if it doesn't fulfill, we'll still write to you and tell you, you know what, unfortunately, because of this and this, we are unable to support this cause. Thank you very much.
I wanted Dr. Nicholas also to add on that, he's very conversant with what monetary policy is and fiscal, can you explain monetary and fiscal in like one minute? What is monetary policy, what is fiscal policy, what the difference between Bank of Uganda and what does the Ministry of Finance, they do, so that people can know the difference?
Okay, thank you so much, Governor, and thank you, Kenneth Gesa, for the update on that. I will just give briefly, I know Deo was with you yesterday, he explained monetary policy to the team that was here. Monetary policy is basically an attempt to use a set of tools to regulate the amount of money in the economy, such that we don't have prices going high. As you may know, prices are driven by availability of money, traditionally, and therefore we use monetary policy to actually regulate that. On the other hand, we have our colleagues working on the fiscal side, the Ministry of Finance, they are doing two things, one, they're looking for revenue, to have funds available for you, and then they're spending that revenue on the economy in the areas that they have identified. Now, the fiscal policy now depends on how they balance out between the amount of money they've got, in form of revenue and borrowing and so forth, and the amount that they're going to spend out. Now, to bring back to what Kenneth said, we do collaborate with the ministry, because some of the actions actually can affect ours, and ours could also affect their actions as well, and we advise one another, and their advice can be taken, if it is necessary to be taken, or may not be taken at any point in time. So that's basically what I can say at this point, thank you.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, for that engagement. According to me, it is five minutes to one, we wanted to release you at one. But we had two questions in the first round, by the gentleman in beige jacket, and the lady on that table. Any other hands kindly allow, some of us here are elders, the sugar levels are going rampant, and the ulcers as well. There are many others that have got here, and because we agreed at one, we are going to distribute them to Bank of Uganda staff, who will be in the tent to address them. I'm going to give them to the Deputy Governor, so that he distributes them to the relevant officers. Those ones will be answered in the tent, we are just going to take those two, and for you, because you put up your hands last, it will be your name and one question, not a story, please. Name and one question. Kevin, please.
Thank you. My name is Pison Omudjizi, I'm the President, Bushein Yischah Community Development Forum. My observation is on the agricultural facility. You mentioned the number of commercial banks and credit institutions. I would be of the view that you also include circles that are more closer to the farmers, because like here in Bushein, we have powerful circles, which are more close farmers, where they can easily access this agricultural facility. Which, in Sahgavala, you talked about how costly it is, okteles entezi, and I would be of the view that our Bank of Uganda, Amale Gatomo, cashless transactions, even these charge of fattories, one can give his fattory using his phone. I thank you.
Kevin, Kevin, the lady at the next table. That's the very last, we have those responded to, and then we do other things.
Thank you very much, my name is Kristin Hope Komjuni, I'm the District Commercial Officer of Bushein District. Mr. Governor, we appreciate the Bank of Uganda that has started to regulate the circles, but we have challenges. I must say, all of us in this hall, we know that there are people who are borrowing, but if I can say those who are borrowing from commercial banks, raise your hands, and those who are borrowing from circles, raise your hands. And the reason is very clear, these circles are down-to-earth to the people. As you've already said, one member who came to the commercial bank and was told to see the manager, went back to put on a suit. These circles are closer to the people, and we face challenges. These circles, if you're regulating them, I fear the cost of funds might end up being like that of commercial banks. So what measures are you putting in place, that if you're going to regulate these circles, because you're coming to these other big ones, I know you've already regulated a book, but there's still like CHAPS, Buturo, this Jibili circle, Mushanga, these are very big circles. What measures are you putting in place, that these funds will not be expensive compared to commercial banks, and they are closer to the people?
Thank you very much, thank you, Deputy Governor. Let's have those two, and the very first question, Deputy Governor, a gentleman again called me, on when do we advise government? Let's just have those three responded to, the rest, ladies and gentlemen, will be given to the Deputy Governor to distribute to the officers. Governor, over to you. Thank you very much, the, I think the first question was on the, on the digitization of currency. This is what countries are doing. We have got a total of approximately 193 countries in the world, and the country which is number one in digitizing is Netherlands, Abada. Netherlands is 100% digital. Another country is Somalia, I've already told you. Somalia for different reasons, because in Somalia, that's why our UPDF is there, is that in Somalia we have insecurity since 1991, under Sidibari. So from that time, 1991, up to now, up to like a few years ago, with the help of our government here, and just the help of Amisom, we have now relative security in Somalia. But Somalia, which you know, which should be a Dubai now, in my view, which is one of the very, very good countries in 1990, 1980s, late 1990s, early 90s. Is a country which is too insecure, no currency, no money. We are actually the ones who have been trying to build the central bank there, and the Ministry of Finance, so they use digital money. Because for them, the problem in Somalia, by the way, the problem in Somalia is clans, because the language is not a problem, they are all, the religion is not a problem, they are all Muslims, 100%. They all talk, they all use the same language, 100%, but their problem is clans. Those who come from Kabale, Kujang Gogunum, Sijini, Gogunum, Zigawa, that's their problem. Can you imagine, that's their problem. So that in that case, no central bank is operational in Somalia. Actually, our central bank is one which has been also in Somalia, so their money is digital. Now, the advantages of a digital currency are many, and one of them is that we shall not spend anything on printing more currency, because when you pay school fees, in Bugeranyangi here, the headmaster will receive the money on the digital, school pay. Having to all use the school pay already, on paying our fees. It was just in 30 seconds, I've already paid the fees. Did you go to the bank in the liney? No. You can imagine the convenience on your home. Then the headmaster, or the head teacher, should also pay firewood, pesho, also on the digital. The other person whom you paid the pesho is going to Kasonganyangi here, and Ruiemi in Kasese, pay digital. The other person whom we bought 5 bags, 10 bags of pesho is also digital. The other was the one who paid, the woman who supplied her 50 kilograms, digital. Now, the other money, you remember, nobody taxed the other money, which is essentially in the bank. Murujungurugitarwahali, it do not let a credit creation, money has been created in the bank without moving. Man has produced many children without getting married, just without that money getting married. The man has created children, that they remember that Mr. Spade, that one registered the money. The man of the role who brought the things at the school was paid digitally, also he received the money. The other money which remained in the bank is there being now lent out. That's why you people, that's why these Americans are very rich, that's why these countries in Europe are very rich. They have almost 100%. In the UK, if you are in the UK, put up your hand in the UK, and you have been moving with 100 pounds, they would arrest you, if you get out 100 pounds to pay any service in the UK, because everybody is going to run away from you, where did you get this? They would be very, very surprised. Otherwise, for them to swipe, you just swipe, you get your Visa card, this one is your ATM cards, and that card is also convertible on any bank, on Westminster, on Roides, on what, on every bank. I was, I think we haven't done well here, and I think that's what we are supposed to do. So that when you have a card of ABSA, it is, works in St. Bick, works in DFC, works in the Centenary, why do we need to have now four banks, four PIN numbers, you are going to have our heads, we could just crash. So we should have only one PIN. Where now, I use it in Centenary, use it in DFC, use it in UK, use it in every bank. That's, I think, where we are going. But as, of course, as a young country, you are, you are, the president has been creating this peace and security, we have told you, we are going to have people coming to bring those machines and so on, and then we move. But digital is what we are going to, other countries at 60%, Germany 70%, Turkey 85%, UK 64%, Netherlands 100%, Somalia 100%. If you reach that, the central bank will not spend any money on printing, we should use that money for now more head centers, and so on, and also in community social responsibility by the central bank. Is that this central bank, Bank of Uganda, constructed a head center in Mitoma here, which is not very far from here. So we also do some of those things. We also now said, instead of being advisory only, we can, yes, we can also these days intervene directly, we have constructed the free-for-free head center for, here in Mitoma. In Kabale it is the same, in Solothurn it is the same, also, in many parts. So we can also intervene these days directly, in some of these projects, if you link with the central bank properly, and you find that the money is there. But the money we have, of course, for us, it is money for community social responsibility, is not the money to do government things. The central bank, Dr. Nicholas has told you, is not to do things, no. For us, it is to do monetary policy, as we have already been told, to control money supply, to control payments, to regulate commercial banks, but not construct a school, please. The role of the central bank is not to construct a school, or head center, head center is constructed by Minister of Health, but the central bank just came in to help. Well, at least we also feel it bad, why can't this woman not travel 10 kilometers to, 100 kilometers? We, as the central bank, can also say, the small money which we have, put 10, it's in the governor's office, maybe, I don't know, 40 million, why can't we get 20 million to, to help here? And that's what we did. We have, Martin, there was a question for you.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Governor, for the opportunity. The district commercial officer has asked about circles. Bank of Uganda has so far registered, licensed three circles, and we still have more application that we are processing. But going directly to the question that you asked about costs and suffocating of circles with costs, I want to comfort you that Bank of Uganda understands the business model of circles. Circles are totally different from these other institutions that we supervise, the commercial banks, great institutions, the MDIs. We know that circles, the business model, is totally different, governed by members, run by members for members, so we understand that, we understand that. And even when it comes to supervision and the costs, our approach is proportionate. The way we look at commercial banks is not the way we're going to look at circles, because we know circles are small institutions, even the governance structure is different, because a circle is owned by members, is governed by members, so you're not going to look at it the same way we look at a commercial bank. A commercial bank is a business, it's a business entity, it's there for profits. A circle is there for social development. So we understand that, and in what we are doing, we are, we know that circles are very sensitive to cost. That's why, that's why even when you look at the application fees, when they are applying to Bank of Uganda, the costs of application to Bank of Uganda are very, very, very small, compared to a Felix Bureau, compared to a commercial bank, because a circle to apply to Bank of Uganda, it's 100,000. Now you compare that to the millions that commercial banks pay. But Deputy Governor, the good thing, next week, we are coming back to Bushein, because we know there are so many circles in Bushein, and we're going to be talking about circles when we come to the radio station in Bushein. So many of those questions will be answered, we are coming with a registrar of cooperatives, so that all those questions from circles are answered in that forum. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Martin, there are even more questions on circles here, thankfully you will be handling that. I just want to provide an addition to what the branch manager said, the money we are going to take from you, for those that have mutilated or damaged notes, is the existing currency which came in 2010. The currency before that, where the 1,000 was green, 5,000 purple, and 20,000 also green, 50,000 brown, that one ended. I know someone has brought a sack there, but we are not taking that. It is the current currency, which you pulled out of your pockets, that we are going to help you with, okay, and replace. I hope that is very clear. Now that we have concluded the question and answer, I will provide those to the Deputy Governor to distribute them, to be answered in the tent. What we are going for now, is I would want to invite the car, Mama, Sanu, please come and give a vote of thanks on behalf of the participants, and then we'll go to the last item.
Thank you, our Director of Ceremonies today, the Deputy Governor, Bank of Uganda, the district leadership. Ladies and gentlemen, protocol observed, good afternoon. Good afternoon. My name is Fiona Sanu, Chief Administrative Officer of Bushein, and my role here is very simple, to give a vote of thanks, with the following, on the following ground. following grounds. Deputy Governor, Bank of Uganda, today as we sit here, somebody asked you which road you used to come to Busheeny. The answer I have in mind is that the road that you used is that road called Decentralization. Any objection? Decentralization. And today, your being here and your team is a manifestation and reemphasizing that decentralization objective of bringing services closer to the people. We are delighted. When your team approached us, that we needed to participate and be part of a meeting with Bank of Uganda, who are all like Bank of Uganda and the district, our rural district, but I think we have gotten very many answers. And it is our prayer that these engagements go on. Why? Government is injecting a lot of money down to the community level. And actually, Governor, we are, our hope and our dream that we see ahead is that very soon, we are having our village and parish banks coming up. Cut off PDM program. I cannot leave mine us talking about PDM. We've talked about economics and the rest, let us also reflect on PDM. Therefore, the financial literacy, the awareness, the capacity building, surely is going a long way to reach out to our communities that are getting money, but the capacity, how to utilize it, the hope that it can change their lives is still far from being realized. And therefore, I also request, Governor, that you direct these commercial banks to equally jointly in partnership with us, and we are ready to join these banks that we have similar engagements. Community, you are not clapping. Participants, we need these engagements. And we have almost every bank that is in Kampala is equally, it equally has a branch here. So let us borrow from what Bank of Uganda has brought. We support working with our commercial banks, we have similar engagements. We can mobilize and mobilize, even if we are to rotate in the various constituencies, we could do it for the sake of having this message and awareness reach the communities. Today, we've received a message to do with our retirement preparations, especially civil servants. Governor, we hear of these bonds and treasury bills. Recently, I was sharing with my team, I can assure you, they have fear, inadequate knowledge. We are not sure that if I sent my ten million hard earned from an art scale, I will reap big. Maybe scientists, all right? So, in support or to supplement what I already said, commercial banks, reach out, and this is countrywide, not only for Busheeny. Let us work with chief administrative officers so that this message reaches out to the civil servants. People feed it, when we feed it, when we are about to retire, you know? But then there are these ventures that we can go into and we retire peacefully. So the way we market and advertise salary loans, let us equally add these products. Now, on behalf of Busheeny District Local Government, this engagement, Governor, has supported the lead policy agenda for Busheeny, local economic development. When we heard we are hosting the Governor, when we are hosting the president, we know State House will bring number of facilities, soft and hard, so that we are able to host the president. Now we were like, where do we host the Governor? Bank of Uganda. And one of your staff called me and is like, we want to use your multipurpose hall. I looked, you know, when you're hosting visitors, you first look at your home. Which area do you clean first? The road to the home, backwards, the kitchen, the plates, the cobwebs, all that. Do we have people from Busheeny here? Can we put up our hands? Busheeny team, who knew that this place can be as beautiful? Hmm? We were like, now this, now that you have added value on our project, which is the multipurpose, and I want to advertise it equally, that I think this can give us reasonable local revenue. You have given us revenue, you paid through IRAS, E, Local Revenue Management. And now we have a receipt that Bank of Uganda did what? I wish you had paid in dollars. So, ladies and gentlemen, this place is very beautiful. The district has put in money next financial year to improve on it further. I think we shall not go wrong. This is a very good business venture. Chief Finance Officer of Busheeny, do you see this? You stand up for recognition. So we really thank you. We've gotten revenue, you have marketed this place, you have given us an insight, I think we are also now business oriented. Governor, I'm also a lady of some, he's intimidating me, but clearance of payments. My district chairperson talked about the delays, but like the gentleman, they are clarified, of course, there are processes, especially at Minister of Finance. Clearing of payments goes with cash flows at Minister of Finance. But I must applaud Bank of Uganda. From the time we went for single treasury account and system, our payments don't take long. Yes. Like I paid salaries in the morning, in the evening, I was seeing staff saying, thank you cow for paying us. I think there is some improvement. And equally, whenever I would pay salaries in the past, the community would know that salaries are out based on the lines of the UPDF staff and the teachers at the various banks. But now, services brought closer to the people. Go to town, nobody knows that we are paid, so we are very secure, moneylenders cannot know, and we are doing very well. Please let us clap for Bank of Uganda and the sister companies. As I conclude, today we have learned that we need to protect and defend our currency notes. It is, I've taken it as food for thought. Why do people fold? Is it the one thousand? Do people fold the fifty thousand? When they are putting in, when it is offeratory time? But there must be that paper that is folded. I think we have learned, we need to increase equally on what we put for offeratory, so that we are not ashamed. Maybe that could be, it is food for thought. I thank you so much, Bank of Uganda and team. I thank you, Busheeny, for turning up massively for this kind of engagements. You can see, you have quenched some thirst, but we are still hungry from the questions that you see. And Busheeny, having these powerful circles, having seen how homesteads are transforming, indeed, there is need to invest more in awareness and financial literacy. Thank you so much. I say this for God and my country.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you very much. Madame Sanu, our cow. Ladies and gentlemen, for all those things that she has said, for securing you from moneylenders, yes, for decorating the hall very well, and for the kugabula that we are going to see Governor Gavudde. Obukalo asante sana! Yonge zatena! That's more like it. Thank you, thank you very much. One last thing is, at the back of these folders are the contacts of the Bank of Uganda, both the branches and the head office, email, website, those social media handles, be it Twitter or X or Facebook, they are all there. We should have no excuse of failing to reach Bank of Uganda kindly. So in conclusion, we are going to have a closing prayer, and I want to invite Reverend Joseph Muyunje, please come and give us a powerful prayer that will ask God to help these people retain all this knowledge and not fold and destroy money. Thank you.
Thank you so much, brother. The Deputy Governor, Bank of Uganda, and dear participants, pray the Lord. Once again, my name is Reverend Joseph Muyunje, and I'm the Dus' and Secretary of Western Kore Dus', and I'm a farmer at home. Allow me, Deputy Governor, before we get into prayer, I share this portion of the verse from the Bible with this team. Just you record it and note it, and after here, you take time and read it. It is from Proverbs. Now proverb is a statement of wisdom. Proverbs, chapter twenty-nine, verse two. Just that verse. It reads, that part I want, "When the righteous are in authority, the people rejoice." Abashiri rekubate jeka, abantu bashen mererua. Mukama simu. May we remain seated and we pray together. Loving Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity that you have given to us, to hear these good words from the Bank of Uganda. We thank you, Lord, for creating us in your image, and you give us this wisdom that we are using to develop ourselves, to develop our areas where we come from and the country. We thank you for our country, Uganda, a country that is full of all the resources that we need to develop ourselves. We thank you, Lord, for the good leadership that we have in this country, right away from the President of the Republic of Uganda, His Excellency Yower Kagutam Seven, and the team he works with to put things to order in this country. We thank you for the lively and beneficial discussion that we have had with our guests this morning and this afternoon from the Bank of Uganda. I pray that you continue to bless them as they go countrywide, to speak to your people and let them know what Bank of Uganda there to do for them. I pray and commit into your heart is the food that is prepared for us to take to nourish our bodies. And I bless the journey mercies, Lord, from here back to our respective areas of residence and offices. And your blessing, God, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, for on us. That blessing guide us, take care of us, remain with us now and forevermore. Amen. God bless you more.
Amen. Bless you, Reverend. Bless you very much. Thank you, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we are going to arise for the anthems. And as per our program, we shall have a group photo for the anthems. I will announce the arrangement. We shall have our panel here take the first photograph, and then we shall have Kaoh and your senior, senior district officials join them. Then we shall have the staff of Bank of Uganda, and finally, all supervised financial institutions, be it the payment systems or the banks with the governor. And now thereafter, I will give you instructions for lunch. Everyone will have a second share if they so wish. It is well. Let's arise for the anthems, please. Thank you very much. May take your seats, and I will invite my co-MC, Ronald. Ronald, please come and give us final recognitions as we prepare for the picture. Let's have our panel, please move down. Our panel, let's move down and have this picture. Members from the supervised financial institutions, please be rising, people are tired.